Well, hello, everybody. Welcome to our council chambers. It's nice to see so many of you this evening. We're going to go ahead and start this meeting. We start with an invocation which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next up, we have a request for approval, the council minutes from January 4th.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I move approval of the city council minutes of the regular evening meeting of January 4th, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks. Thank you. Next up, we have some special business, some very special business tonight. But before we move into the first topic, which is the appointment of Amber Byerly, I think I saw Amber walk in. I need to take this off. Welcome with her family. As Director of Arts and History, I'd like to take a moment to honor Terry. Terry Shoresman, right there. There you are, for your service as the founding director of the Department of Arts and History and all that you've done. And so I took some liberties and have proclaimed today Terry Shoresman Day in the city of Boise. So Terry, will you please head on up here? And I'd love to read this before I present you with one. Oh, you could be wherever you'd like. So I wanted to read this proclamation, and then I'm sure that some folks, council members, have something to say as well. But I'll start with, whereas Terry Shoresman has faithfully served as the City of Boise, Boise Department of Arts and History's first director, starting shortly after the department formed in September 2008. And whereas Terry re-instituted the City of Boise Archives to identify, preserve, and make accessible historical records of our city government and other unique materials donated from the community, fostering a collection consisting of over 700 linear feet of materials to date. And whereas Terry nurtured the City of Boise's public art collection through the percent for art ordinance, growing the city's public art and fine art collection, which now includes more than 900 cultural assets with an estimated value of $7 million, and formed the care and conservation team to oversee its long-term integrity. And whereas Terry began the City of Boise's Cultural Sites Program with the addition of the James Castle House and the forthcoming Irma Hayman House. Can't wait to open that and have you there with us. Whereas Terry expanded the scope and reach of the Arts and History Grants Program, resulting in grant awards totaling over $1.8 million since the grant fund's inception in 1997. And whereas Terry established the History Division with a commitment to research, public engagement, education, and collection development that resulted in 700 historical artifacts and over 300 oral history interviews since 2009. And whereas Terry initiated and implemented Boise 150, the commemoration of our city's 150th anniversary, showcasing how cultural programming informs and amplifies residents and visitors' love for our city. And whereas, as a result of Terry's leadership, the City of Boise's Department of Arts and History has received multiple local, state, national, and international awards, including being recognized twice by Harvard's Top 25 Innovations in American Government Award. And whereas through Terry's cultivation and direction, the City of Boise has hired and collaborated with hundreds of artists, historians, archivists, writers, educators, editors, fabricators, and more, showcasing the immense talent of Boise's creative sector and their contributions to our economy, and persisting in these alliances and support for our cultural community throughout this pandemic. And whereas Terry has served the residents of Boise with creativity, innovation, and dedication, and the staff, residents, and council members of the City of Boise deeply appreciate her service and leadership. Now therefore, I, Lauren McLean, Mayor of Boise, do hereby proclaim January 11th, 2022, Terry Shoresman Day in our city. Congratulations and thank you so much. We will put a copy of this in the archives that I mentioned, and then I'd love to hand you this, and you're welcome to say something.
I'm so surprised. Thank you so much. I much appreciate it. I will just say it's been an honor of a lifetime to serve this city and this department. Thank you. Thank you. I really look forward to, you know, what comes next. We have a terrific staff, terrific commitment to the city, great vision. And I think with Amber Byerly, we're going to just take it to the next level. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I was surprised by that presentation too, and I think it's so well-deserved and such a wonderful honor for someone who has done so much for our city. I was just recalling with Terry, she was one of the very first people that I ever dealt with at the City of Boise. Back, I mean, it must have been really close to when Arts and History was founded. It should have been around that same time period. And I just remember how warm and innovative and welcoming of new ideas Terry was at the time. And then fast forward several years, I got to give the Boise 150 sesquicentennial proclamation on the House floor in the legislature. And what an honor that was to coordinate with Terry's folks and make sure that that went down in Idaho history, that Boise was celebrating that incredible milestone. So thank you so much for everything you've done, Terry. Your legacy will outlive your time at the city, and I think you have so much to be proud of. I will think of you every single time I'm sitting having a coffee, looking at the beautiful tree at Sherry Buckner Web Park. And what a heavy lift that was to figure out what that piece of art needed to be to really make that park the place that it is. And I think it really speaks to your perseverance. So thank you.
Madam Mayor. Terry, I think that you're going to get highlighted quite a bit for all of the incredible things you've done in your role at the city. I've only had the opportunity to work with you for a couple of years at the city, but for nearly a decade in the nonprofit sector and the creative community, and that impact is real. I've applied for the Cultural Ambassador Program three times before I was elected. I never won it. But some of our nonprofit partners, Global Lounge, Tree Fort, some of the nonprofits that you were empowered as our cultural ambassador, you know, have really taken that and made our city a much more welcoming and beautiful space, and that legacy will leave on. I have one story I want to share with you that kind of hits personal to me. One of the things that I get to do is I get to help get bicycles to a lot of kids in the community, and they ride along the green belt. And about a year ago, all these little kids started coming into our shop, and they kept saying, "Go with the flow. Go with the flow." It's like, what are you guys talking about? And it's that tunnel that we had the mural done a couple of years ago that says, "Go with the flow" from the inside, and they all absolutely love it. And these are kids from all over the world. And art really is one of those universal languages. It doesn't matter who you are, where you're from, it makes you feel like home. And so as people come to Boise, no matter where they're from, whether it's inside the United States, inside of Idaho, or all across the world, the work that you've done has made people feel like home when they get here, and I just want to thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Terry, gosh, I met you when you started to work for Compass, I think, for the first time, and had been involved in the Arts Commission and involved in envisioning it to become more than that. And I can't tell you how thrilled I was that you were chosen to be the leader, because your leadership, while quiet and consistent, was also very determined and very visionary and very innovative, and it drove what was, I think originally envisioned as a kind of small pocket, something in the city, into something that I think has become one of the leading departments in the city, because it touches every other department. It touches everyone's life in this city. And by expanding it to also include the history and the city archives, you've made it into something that also preserves our legacy. And that's so important, I think, for a city like this that's grown so much in the last little while, preserving that legacy is something that we all really treasure. So thank you for your service, but thank you most of all for having the vision to make this much more than I think other people thought it was going to be. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Terry. We're not supposed to have favorites, but I got to tell you, until I joined the city, there's a lot of work that the city has done on my behalf as a member of this community, and I never knew who was responsible for it. I just knew that I loved it. And one of the things that I loved, and I know I've shared this with you, Terry, is I remember there was a bit of a dust-up at one point over who we awarded, who the city awarded public arts contracts to, commissions to, and there was there was a little bit of an uproar about why we would award these contracts, these commissions, to artists outside of Boise or outside of Idaho. And I remember the reaction. It was not to dig in your heels and say, "Well, if you're qualified, you'd get one of those contracts." That's not what the Arts and History Commission did. They put on workshops to help prepare Boise artists to successfully win those contracts. And that made a huge impression on me, that here we have an important organization, an important agency, taking in that feedback and responding to it with grace and investing in the knowledge of our community, so that those artists could hopefully win some of those contracts. And then also, you know, the Boise 150 was a powerful experience for me. It was the first time I ever felt that I had a really deep connection to what the city did. I loved, let's see if I can say it, the sesquicentennial shop. I spent a lot of time there, because a lot of my artist friends had exhibits there, and it was beautiful. And I didn't know that that was your work. I didn't know that you were the one leading that type of work for our city. And then I had my first engagement with the Grants Program, and I got to be one of the people who helped select grants. And that was an amazing experience to interact with folks who love the arts and who know that it takes money for artists to survive. They need resources to be able to do what they do, and they do so much with so little. And then when I really got involved here, I realized that diversity, equity, and inclusion was a big priority for you, Terry. That there were two departments with the City of Boise who I saw really taking charge and taking initiative when it came to that work. And the way you approached that work has really been a guiding star for me in that it's something that is done naturally. It's not something that is held separate from the rest of the work we do. It is integral to all the work we do. And so as I move forward here at the City of Boise, I will be thinking of you, Terry, and the example that you set. And I look forward to being able to interact with you just as girlfriends outside of this. But as a girlfriend, I am so proud of you, and I'm so grateful for you, and I cannot wait to see what you do next.
Well, I want to say again that on behalf of the city, the team of people that you work with, the residents that so enjoy and appreciate the programs you've created, a big thank you. You have, you helped build and establish a program that will last for generations. And council members tonight have talked to the legacy and specific programs that I too have loved. But part of that legacy is that you've built up others around you. And a big part of building a legacy is passing the baton when you know the time is right. And I so appreciate that you let us know early that you wanted to retire, but that you've actively engaged in hiring the next Director of Arts and History Department and are here tonight to welcome her and will be with us the next week or so to help transition Amber into the role. Because that too is a legacy that's incredibly important, that transition, as well as the long history that you have with her, who started years ago, coming full circle, as the first city historian. And so with that, I say thank you so much to Terry. Of course, we will see you again, but I'd love for Amber to come up, Amber Byerly, because she, her nomination as the next Director of the Department of Arts and History is before the council.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move that we approve the appointment of Amber Byerly to serve as the new Director of Arts and History.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, just before Amber says anything, I had the opportunity to have a conversation with Amber just a couple of weeks ago about what she hopes to accomplish and what she hopes to bring to our Arts and History Department. And I think the most impactful thing that she told me was that she wants to spend the first bit of her time as the Arts and History Director, learning from the current staff, learning from the rest of the city staff. And we all know that everyone has so much institutional knowledge in the city and the inner workings and the goings-on. So I thought that that was a really fantastic way to approach this position, is from a place of curiosity. And I wish you all the best, and I really look forward to working with you.
Madam Mayor. Amber, it was really exciting to learn that you were the candidate that had been chosen for this job. And I know you know that there's big shoes to fill, but I also know that you're very capable and really look forward to the next iteration of this department under your leadership. So thank you for applying and congratulations.
All right, with that, I won't be voting, but I want to say thank you also. I'll echo my excitement that you were interested in the position, the importance that the connection to the department over the years, the relationship with Terry, your understanding of history, your desire to see active history within our community, and of course, the importance of arts, made you a top candidate. And I'll ask that the clerk call the roll, and then the floor is yours. Welcome.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings. Bajent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Boy, you really laid it all out there right away for everybody to see what I was walking into. Terry deserves every bit and a whole bunch more, as you all know. To have been a part of the humble beginnings of at least the historian part. Elaine, I have stories from the back of the mayor's office from back in the day. I'm just, I'm honored. I'm humbled. I don't look at it as I have big shoes to fill, because I'm going to be calling her a lot. And I see this as a continuation of great things. We're going to let this roll, let this flourish. It takes all of us, and for a city to thrive, it takes the arts, it takes contextualizing our history and understanding where we've been, to understand where we can go and where we can grow, and I just hope that I don't mess that up, Terry, because it's all there. So I just wanted to again say thank you. My son, who's got the wiggles in the back, said, "Mom, why do you want this work?" As we're sitting back here, and I said, "Because I love it." And that's the passion that I'll bring every single day, and that's what I promise to the citizens and to Mayor you and council. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, you all should feel welcome to sneak out whenever you want. Enjoy the evening and congratulations once again. We'll see you tomorrow. Well, thanks, everybody. Next up, we will move to the appointment of Kylene Collette to the Public Works Commission for a remaining term ending September 2023. Is Kylene here in the audience?
And Mayor, she's online.
Wonderful. Welcome, and we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent to appoint Kylene Collette to the Public Works Commission to a remaining term ending September 2023.
Is that a unanimous consent request?
Without objection.
Without objection. Well, you are approved. Kylene, you're welcome to say something. I just want to say thank you so much for your service on this commission. We really appreciate it and look forward to what more you have to offer in the rest of this term. You're welcome to say a couple of things.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, council members. I've served on the commission for the past year in the student seat. And so when my term is coming to an end and found out there was an opportunity to move to a regular seat, I was really excited about being able to serve for a longer term. It's been really encouraging seeing the good work that Public Works is doing under the direction of Steve. It's been incredibly impressive, incredibly humbling, and I'm really excited that I get to just play a small part in whatever amazing future Boise has.
Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate it, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move into the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, before we consider the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion to amend it. I move that Resolution 3122 be deferred until a date certain of January 25th, so that staff can complete reviewing the documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Oh, that's the one. Great. Okay. All right. And with that, we'll all take a motion for the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda with the change voted on.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings. Bajent. Bajet. All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, we'll move into ordinances. We have nothing on first or second reading. We have one ordinance on third reading.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that further reading of ordinance 5821 be dispensed with and the record reflect that it has been read for the third time in full.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Clerk?
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajet.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD dash 58 dash 21, an ordinance CAR 21 dash 00020 Boise Independent School District and Boise City Airport. For profit located 8373 West Victory Road, annexing 128 acres. And for profit located 6755 West Victory Road, annexing 4.25 acres of certain land and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho. Adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Boise City. Establishing and determining the land use classification of said 128 acres as A dash one open land. And annexing 4.25 acres as M dash one D light industrial with design review. Setting for the reason statement and support of such annexation and zone change. Directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission. Providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory. Be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and provide an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 5821.
Second. Motion and second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajet.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we'll move into the public hearings portion of the evening. For this one, the short, the one item on the agenda tonight is the short-term rental ordinance. We will, we have staff presentation. There's a lot of people in the room that will talk and then I'll be asking. And the clerk to also help us with anybody online that's here to testify. And so we'll go through the list as I have people that signed up in advance as well as people that signed up in person. I have, if I haven't called your name either online or in person, just raise your hand, you'll get it, we'll get you up, get you on up here. And with that, go ahead, Nikki.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having us this evening. For the record, my name is Nikki Olivier Helenkamp. I'm a housing advisor in the mayor's office. And I'm joined by Jamie Heinzerling from the clerk's office. And our goal today is to provide you with some background on the short-term rental ordinance to bring forward information that you requested during the October work session. And to try to answer any questions you may have and to not pass out also on the goal list. So here we go. So we're going to start with the definition of short-term rental. And you'll see here that this applies to essentially any dwelling that is offered for a fee and for 30 days or less. So sometimes referred to as a short-term rental or a vacation rental. A little bit of how we got here. So the Idaho State Code states that cities cannot prohibit short-term rentals. This ordinance does not seek to prohibit short-term rentals. It also states that cities may implement regulations as deemed necessary to safeguard the public health, safety and general welfare. And in order to protect the integrity of residential neighborhoods. So we, staff was directed to do research looking at peer cities and best practice and to bring forward an ordinance, which we did in October. You all provided some feedback and requested specific follow-up around the ordinance's requirement for insurance. And around whether some of the data that we hope to gather from this ordinance is available from other sources. So we have some follow-up information on both of those items for you tonight.
Madam Mayor. Thank, thank you. Just to clarify that last slide, in addition to what you've listed here for Idaho code. There's a second section of the same statute that also says neither a city nor county shall regulate the operation of a short-term rental marketplace too, right? So in addition to not being able to prohibit, having authority to regulate for health and welfare. We're also prohibited from regulating the operation of a short-term rental marketplace. Is that right?
I'm going to refer to Jamie, who's nodding.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of our goals around the short-term rental license, again, the first one around safeguarding public health, safety and general welfare. And protecting the integrity of residential neighborhoods and in turn to better understand the impact of short-term rentals. On the larger housing market with the goal of grounding any additional future policy in data. And in terms of our objectives here, in addition to requiring registration, this ordinance also requires that. An operator of short-term rentals have insurance. Jamie is going to go into more detail about that insurance requirement in just a few minutes and about the reasons that it was included. So for now, what I'll share is that requiring insurance sets a basic floor for the protection of consumers and for homeowners. In the event of some kind of harm. Some platforms such as Airbnb include insurance policies for any properties listed on those platforms. While others allow users to opt into an insurance policy and still others don't include them at all. So again, Jamie is going to go into a bit more detail about this in a few minutes. Another thing that the ordinance requires is a local agent for any owners who reside outside the state of Idaho. By requiring a local agent, the ordinance seeks to provide a mechanism for addressing safety issues. As well as potential negative impacts on the neighborhood. On the right-hand side are some of the typical concerns that we've heard from neighbors. About the impact of short-term rentals on the integrity of their neighborhood. So in terms of how a local agent would impact some of these issues, for example, if there was an issue where. Frequently there were cars illegally parked outside of a unit. Typically, the response from the city would be to ticket those vehicles. However, if the recipients of those tickets are going to be leaving town to be replaced by a new group of guests the following weekend. That strategy is unlikely to be effective in addressing the issue in the same way that it would be if we were talking about a long-term resident. With the contact information of the homeowner or their local agent, the city would be able to reach out and try to engage in a meaningful relationship with them. By being proactive and working to be a resource and partner so that we could work together to address that issue. This ordinance also seeks to quantify the market in terms of understanding the number and types of rentals. The ownership of those units and specific locations. And again, Jamie is going to go into more detail in just a few minutes about other sources for that data as well. And how that interacts with what the ordinance would require. And then it also seeks to determine the degree to which housing affordability is being impacted by the short-term rental market.
Madam Mayor. Nikki, one question on the local agent. Can a local agent be a corporation? For instance, if you want to license a business in the state of Idaho, there's a laundry list of companies that are happy to be your local agent. They're essentially PO boxes. Is that permissible under our statute for, for short-term rentals?
I'm going to refer to Jamie with that question. Madam Mayor, council members, yes, we would allow a company to be a contact. However, we would want that local contact information, so more detailed likely than a PO box, but also a contact number. A specific name in which to be a contact from that company as well. So we could reach out and have, again, as Nikki indicated, those meaningful conversations and have a specific contact. Not unlike what we do with a lot of our other business licenses in which we manage for the city.
Okay, I guess maybe I don't understand how the, just how this works. Does the, the clerk's office or somebody else have? That's not in the ordinance. It just says local agent who has an address. Is there some, like, do you have some discretion to impose additional rules beyond what's in the ordinance or just educate me on how that would work?
We certainly can. We can condition certain applications and certain licenses as necessary. I think though, as long as we had, again, we have a local phone number, we have a local name, again, we do this with other business licenses. And mailing information for them, we would likely require or request that we have both. A local address in which to send things to for, again, information, educational materials, so on and so forth. And just being able to have, again, a local and even a PO box that might be local would be something that we would certainly look at, but would like to have a physical address too. We also have the physical addresses for those specific short-term rental properties as well.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Jamie, since you're there and this question is on the table, why don't I ask it now? We've had at least one commenter ask why we referred to this as an agent in the. In the ordinance rather than a contact. I wonder if you could answer that for me.
You know, great question. I think part of it is, is that we might have local agents. So you might have a local management company. That manages various rentals for you. And so that would be a local agent versus a local individual. So that is permissible under the ordinance.
So using the word agent just allows us to, for either to be an individual or a company.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So in terms of potential policy considerations, staff looked at several Idaho cities that have passed or are considering ordinances and you'll see them listed here. And we saw in those ordinances a variety of approaches. Some of them required that neighbors be notified that a short-term rental was operating in their neighborhood. This ordinance does not require that. Some required inspections by, for example, the fire department to make sure that. Units had the appropriate smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, egress windows. This ordinance does not require that. It also, we also saw ordinances that limited the number of units on a single parcel. And this ordinance also does not require that. And fee ranges, we saw in the range of 100 to $285 per unit per year. So in terms of the goal of the ordinance here, it's to not be heavy-handed, but to provide the basic protections in terms of safety and neighborhood integrity mentioned earlier. And now Jamie is going to walk us through the details of that ordinance approach and provide the additional information about the issues that you requested follow-up on. Unless anyone has questions they'd like to ask right away.
Madam Mayor. The list of cities that are up there, I guess maybe Rexburg was standing. Are cities that have really high amounts of tourism and sometimes they qualify for a few different. Opportunities to regulate things. Are the reason that they have the ability to consider some of those approaches because of that? Or are those on the table for any city regardless if they're, have a high rate of tourism?
My understanding is that it's the latter, but I'm going to turn to Jamie just to make sure. Madam Mayor, council members, there is just a very specific provision on state code as to what we can and cannot regulate. As Nikki indicated earlier and Council Bajet referred to an additional provision. So all cities are required to follow that state code and those provisions within the state code very specifically. So no exemptions for more tourist-like cities. Yep, absolutely. Well, thank you for having me. I mean, as Nikki mentioned, the ordinance approach originally.
I'm sorry, I've got to ask you to keep your mask on, just like the, we ask the public to keep it on when they're speaking.
Sorry. So as, as Nikki mentioned, the ordinance approach originally was presented to council in October. And requires anyone operating a short-term rental to obtain a short-term rental license from the City of Boise. The base information listed on the slide here is the basic information along with a list of amenities that we would be requesting from those applying. But would really allow us to identify specific locations of the short-term rentals, owner contact information and proof of insurance. And as I mentioned earlier, this is very consistent with other business license types that we issue within the City of Boise. And would have an associated fee to cover the cost of simply administering the program. Which we use on a very standard formula to calculate that at the cost of $80 per location. Also, as Nikki mentioned earlier, it's important to note that after our October presentation, council did have questions specific to the insurance requirements that were within the code. And the data points that may be obtained outside of an ordinance approach, and I'll walk you through each of those at this time.
Madam Mayor, really, really quickly, Nikki, before you leave the last slide. The annual license requirement includes more than a map of the short-term rental, right? It includes a detailed diagram with accompanying description of the short-term rental, including. A floor plan, a plan for the yard, a plan for the outbuildings and so forth. And so like, for instance, if I wanted to leave my home for a month and rent it out, I would need to submit those documents to the city laying out essentially everything inside my home, right?
That is correct. From a floor plan and a layout, that allows us to take a look at. How many rooms are available, for how many people are being advertised to stay there, so on and so forth. So we have that information. Additionally, taking a look at things like, are there pools? Are there other amenities available, which are very consistent with what the marketplace is also. Request for advertising those types of properties.
Fair enough. My, my question is, when I submit the drawings of the inside of my home, are they then subject to a public records request?
Madam Mayor, council member, I would have to seek legal opinion on that piece, but I'm happy to follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
So I think one of the most compelling arguments as we move forward is the point of the, through the ordinance. Is to ensure that for the safety and protection of not only the homeowner that's renting out. But also for those that are actually renting the property is that adequate insurance is available on the property. There are safety concerns, lack of insurance certainly is a safety concern if that is not in place. Additionally, if there are people that are underinsured, and I think it's important to note that maybe not all homeowners. Understand and know that their base homeowner policy really does not or may not actually have liability insurance and coverage for injuries. If they are renting their home out or a portion of their home out for profit. So again, a underinsured risk remains. And that's not just for, you know, the theft that might occur or property damage that might occur to the property. But it is also for injury and death that might occur on the property. And unfortunately, even in Idaho, while limited in Idaho, but also across the United States, we have seen that unfortunately. And so those are the types of things that we want to make sure that people are covered for if they do in fact occur. In addition, we have marketplace inconsistencies. So not always is it required to have insurance through various marketplaces. Or as we found through doing some testing, that it's very easy to opt out. Or say that you do have insurance coverage, but you're not required to provide proof, excuse me, of that coverage. Some, as Nikki indicated, actually offer insurance coverage at a million dollar for free. And so that's certainly part of that marketplace and how they market their materials and their platform. Also, the property owners can also have other methods of payment to ensure that they have coverage. Again, it all depends on the marketplace in which you are listing your property. So with that, staff recommendation and what is included in the actual ordinance is a one million, excuse me, $1 million insurance requirement. That's an industry standard for general commercial liability insurance for businesses. It also is an industry standard across marketplaces that require insurance. Again, as I mentioned before, also all of our business licenses. Do also have a standard of that $1 million liability insurance, or we are in progress of putting that in place currently. So again, very consistent with how we manage other business licenses.
Madam Mayor, quick, quick question there. We had an application several months ago about a nail salon that was operating in somebody's house. And they expanded it and then there was going to require some additional things because of the amount of chairs that were there. If it's a single nail chair or where it doesn't require approval, so they just have one chair in a nail salon. Or they're operating another business outside of their house that fulfills the requirements of, of the zoning. Are we still requiring them to notify us that they're operating a business out of their house? Are we requiring them to have insurance in order to operate that business?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, we actually do not at the City of Boise require a business license for a nail salon. So there are zoning requirements, which I cannot speak to in my role. But there are also state requirements with regards to nail salons as well. So again, I can't speak to those, but could certainly find out more information for you.
And Madam Mayor, just a quick follow-up there. Are there other businesses that people can operate within their home that we allow within zoning? That we require additional measures like insurance policies?
Madam Mayor, council member, from a zoning perspective, I cannot speak to that piece. However, we do every business license that we have. So everything from childcare to taxi businesses to sidewalk cafes. All require insurance.
Great, thank you. Madam Mayor. On the insurance question, this is something that's been a personal sticking point for me. You know, long-term rentals outnumber short-term rentals in our city about 40 to one. It's about 40,000 long-term rentals, a little over 1,000 short-term rentals. If people are going to be harmed by lack of egress windows, by dangerous conditions, by theft, et cetera. All other things being equal, the chances are 40 to one, it's going to happen in a long-term rental, not a short-term rental. They're actually way higher than that though, because the vast majority of short-term rentals are going through platforms like Airbnb, et cetera, that require insurance. So really it's hundreds to one. So really, it's hundreds to one. And I, I guess I just, I'm having a difficult time understanding why we would target a very small slice of a potential problem when a long term rental is the same thing. It's a business that's operated in a residential area for profit, often by, often by a corporation or by, you know, multi owner landlord. And so I wonder if there were discussions about this or rationale for why short term rentals in particular would be targeted for this.
No, no, please, no. That's really.
We have, we have expectations around decorum and we ask that people don't boo, they don't clap, that you say, you listen, you have your chance to talk. And so I'm going to have to ask that that not happen again.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bajant, that is an excellent question. And what we were deemed with was to take a look at short term rentals and how we could better understand what that market looked like and what the impacts were. And as we looked at best practices and how those were managed across the United States, insurance was a component of that. If that is something that council would like to look at differently, we're certainly happy to look at various policy, you know, considerations with regards to that. But if we were going to go through the licensing process, we felt it was important to make sure that we had all of those safety measures, not only for the homeowners, but also for those that were staying in those facilities. So that was the reason that when looking at short terminal specifically, we felt import, insurance was important from that regard.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
All right. So additionally, as requested, city staff did reach out to various state entities and we looked at AirDNA, which is a data platform to determine if the same information was available outside of this ordinance approach that we have been talking about thus far. In short, the information that we gathered and that those regular and state agencies actually gather does not provide us some of the information that we were hoping for. And I'll walk through this a little bit more specifically. But that did it does not provide for address, ownership information or proof of insurance information, and it is not granular to the city level. So we reached out specifically to the Idaho Department of Commerce and Tourism and to the Idaho State Tax Commission. Interestingly enough, as we looked into AirDNA, and as I mentioned, I'll talk about that in a moment. That is what the Idaho Department of Commerce and Tourism also uses to get the data that they have and that they analyze. They do look at that at a county level, not at the city level, and they look at each county across the entire state. It does provide good historical information because it captured that data from two thousand and fourteen to present. So it's interesting to look at those trends. And it does at a high level provide information on occupancy rates, average daily rental rates, other things that we would not be capturing within an ordinance approach. Additionally, the Idaho State Tax Commission does take tax dollars and does remit tax dollars from short term rentals. However, they do that by type. So hotel motel, income tax, G bad, as far as a district goes. Also, they distribute those tax dollars, but by fund to the various departments and tax districting agencies. So they do not either have granular data or data specific to locations that are short term rentals.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Jamie, just because that example of hotel motel was listed there, do, do we require liability insurance? Do we require hotels and motels to have liability insurance?
Hotels and motels are also not regulated at the state level or at the city level currently. All right. So as we look at the additional data source, excuse me, for AirDNA, which is really an alternative means of gathering short term rental information. And I'm sorry, it's not larger here. I was hoping you could see this a little bit better. But it does really provide that alternative means of gathering information. However, it only provides data from two of the marketplaces, which is Airbnb and VRBO. Therefore, really does not provide a full market picture. Data collected does provide trends over time, as we talked about, from the benefits of commerce and tourism and things such as average daily rates, occupancy rates and the types of rentals. So we will know if it is a home, a private room or a shared room through this data platform. So again, it's a very high level snapshot that really congregates all of the data into kind of a general statistic for us to take a look at. When looking at AirDNA data, I believe that it again provides a really good overview for the city and allows us to better understand the impacts to specific neighborhoods. Even when just looking at two marketplaces, the Airbnb and VRBO, and we can certainly use this information to help us better understand the market and to help inform the approach that we think is best for the city. So if you take a look at the very left hand side, that is a picture of the entire city of Boise based on AirDNA data that we were able to obtain. Every one of those purple dots is a short term rental in the city of Boise. When I ran this report prior to the beginning of this year, there were a thousand seventy-five short term rentals just on these two marketplaces. When you look at the middle picture, it is really concentrated north and east of Curtis and Overland Roads. So you can see that there's a higher concentration of short term rentals in that area. The picture on the right is one block in which there are six different rentals available just within that one block. So again, this is very helpful in painting that picture of the impacts in certain areas as well as within certain neighborhoods. This particular block is between Seventh and Eighth Street and Franklin to Hayes. So with all of this being said, any one approach has gaps to information and data. Therefore, an option is to move forward with a dual data and ordinance approach to capture the most complete picture possible. Again, when looking at just the data and marketplace picture, we are getting a higher level of information, such as again, the daily average rates, occupancies, things we would not gather through an ordinance. AirDNA, again, though, provides only a small picture or a portion of the picture for those short term rentals through those two marketplaces. And you can see there's some other marketplaces that are not included in the AirDNA data that are in the local market of Boise.
Jamie, do we have that kind of granular data? Actual owner, occupancy rates, et cetera, for long term rentals, the ones that are forty to one compared to short terms?
Other than looking at specific assessor data, if you knew that those were long term rentals, we would not have that information.
So we can't tell when we look at assessor data, whether the owner lives there, is renting it out, et cetera?
So you could look at that, but you wouldn't know if they were rental properties or not. That would be the owner information. Which is very much the same situation that we have here with short term rentals is that we don't know that specific data and which ones are short term rentals and which ones are not.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Jamie when it comes to applicability and logistics. So let's say that, that you have a property, you rent it out for, and it's only going to be, you think, twenty days and it ends up being longer. So you have to register then. If you're, if it's intended to be less, I mean, tell me like, what does that mean? Like if they go over or under, can you give like the logistics and how that would work?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, it would be any time that you would have less than that thirty days. So if it went over, you would still be required at that original intent or on a regular basis, it was less than thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition, if we look at just the ordinance picture, it does not provide us a full picture either. So you would have the property owner and identification, you would have that local agent. We would have a better picture because we would have all marketplaces. Whereas alternatively, if we're just looking at AirDNA, we only have a portion of the marketplaces and we would have proof of insurance. So a dual approach would help us capture the more complete picture to achieve the safety goals of homeowners and those renting those facilities, along with providing council with the most complete picture to determine future policy if any was needed. So with that, this evening, we are seeking council direction on the approaches to use to achieve the goals and objectives as previously stated. But specific to the ordinance approach that is before you tonight, a public hearing is required for the fee portion of this ordinance. Once the public hearing has concluded, council can proceed with the first reading of the ordinance is drafted. They can determine not to move forward with the ordinance at this time, or they may direct staff to amend the ordinance based on the comment that they hear tonight or policy direction that they would like to see. So tonight, again, we have the public hearing before you, the first reading, if you so choose, followed by the second and third reading, which would be required if this ordinance is to move forward. Implementation based on the time of approval would be approximately sixty days for system enhancement and development at a cost of six to ten thousand dollars. That, once the ordinance is further developed and solidified, could be pinpointed a little bit better with regards to timeline and the cost for such implementation. During that implementation phase, we would also be doing community outreach and education. We would work with our community engagement team to develop that messaging. And we would continue to work with the Boise Regional Realtors. We would work with marketplaces to make sure that they understood the ordinance requirements and could communicate that with their patrons and make sure that the community at large understood the requirements and could comply and know the timeline in which to comply with an ordinance if so passed. And with that, Nikki and I would stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor. I think I heard Lucy first. I have a question. Can, do you expect that you'll need additional staffing if this goes into place?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, at this point in time, based on just getting the base information and just the licensing portion, we would not need additional staffing to support this at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you, Nikki. Nikki, you did awesome. I'm so glad you're still with us. I only brought it up because you did. So I have a couple of questions in response to some questions I got from constituents that I think that probably people have questions about generally. So the first one is the proof of insurance. If you are solely renting your, your unit through a platform like Airbnb or VRBO that either provides insurance or already requires proof of insurance, then would you still need to provide separate insurance to the city of Boise?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, we would accept proof of being on that marketplace. And as if we move forward with this ordinance, we would work with the marketplace and we would work with those individuals to find out exactly what that documentation would look like and be acceptable from that platform. So no additional insurance would be needed. We just need the proof that it is in place once they license.
All right, wonderful. Madam Mayor, may I have a couple more questions while I'm at it? And you don't need to go through me. Sorry, I'm not super organized here. Oh, so in the definition section of the ordinance, it has the short term, the definition of short term rental or vacation rental. And the way I'm reading it, it would apply to single family dwellings, like homes, condominiums, ADUs, but not if you were renting a single bedroom in your home. Is that the correct reading of that or am I not reading that correctly?
So my understanding based on the way it is written is that because that is an address that is renting out based on the definition of a short term rental, that if it even was a room, that you would need to also license as a short term rental.
Interesting, okay. And then moving on to section three dash twenty-two dash seven, subsection C. Every applicant and licensee should have an ongoing affirmative duty to update information. So say someone had a short term rental that they, when they applied for their license, they only listed it on VRBO and they decided that they would also like to list it on Facebook Marketplace and Airbnb. Would that be an example of something that would then need to be reported to the city?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that is correct. We would want that updated information. For instance, if they change platforms, that could in fact change their insurance status and the like. So we would want to make sure that we had that information updated, which could simply be an email to us indicating that change.
Okay, great. And then my final question is around just the process and notification. So if somebody applies for a business license to have a short term rental, then what does the notification process look like to renew that license at the end of the year?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, through our system that we currently have, we have automated notices that go out via email to let the individuals know it's sixty days, also thirty days and fifteen days as reminders. Typically, as a business practice, if we get down to that fifteen day mark and somebody has not actually renewed their license, we pick up the phone and we do a courtesy call, just validating the status. Hopefully, speaking to someone to know if it is no longer in business or no longer with that use, we would make that note and take them off the list or hopefully make contact and if they did need to renew, walk them through that process.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Madam Mayor. Just one question for me for now. One of the things that it's already been brought up is the detailed diagram of the house and seemed like a really good idea. I didn't realize, I think until now, that we were going to be doing this sort of combination systems approach. If we're going to be using things like AirDNA with the combination of this ordinance and kind of addressing these things. I guess my question is like, wouldn't that be identified, the number of rooms or the number of occupancy by using their platforms? Because at least the platforms that I'm familiar with, it says how many people you can stay there, how many rooms that are there. So we would have some of that information already. I'm trying to understand if we have that information, what the advantages of having that additional information from a detailed diagram would be?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I think the piece that is missing with that dual approach, and certainly tonight, that is up to mayor and council, if you would like to do that dual approach or not. But what we don't have is we don't have a connection with what is on AirDNA to an actual physical address of a short term rental, because there is no connection. We don't have access to address information through platforms such as AirDNA or the marketplaces for that matter.
Madam Mayor, so we know that it exists. We don't know exactly which one it is and where it exists. So we don't have any real way of knowing that there's four bedrooms in this neighborhood and two bedrooms in this neighborhood. We just know that there are six bedrooms altogether somewhere.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that is correct.
Great.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Jamie. So in the objectives part of your presentation, where we're talking about neighborhood integrity. So we talk about parking issues, noise issues and neighborhood disruption. Do we have any indication of what the level of that is and how have we been measuring that? Is this reports to the police?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, I think that is the magic question is because we get complaints, but we don't know if they're tied to a short term rental or not. So this would help us identify where those exist, would help us build relationships with those local agents to help potentially solve some of those challenges. Often, from an enforcement standpoint, we will get a concern or a complaint and those come in through a number of ways. But as we address those, oftentimes, we don't even get an address from the complainant and it takes some investigatory work or follow up with that individual. So I know we have been asked, well, why don't you just ask if it's a short term rental? Frankly, if they don't know the addresses, oftentimes, they're not going to know if their neighbor is a short term rental, a long term renter, or somebody who in fact is a long term neighbor.
Okay, just a quick follow up, Madam Mayor. If this ordinance were to pass in whatever iteration it ends up being, how will we enforce this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, some of that policy direction would be up to mayor and council. But certainly, we are a complaint based organization and that is how we do follow up. So we would follow up on those complaints. We would investigate just as we do any other licensed complaint, any other neighborhood or nuisance complaint. So we would do that very consistently with what we do in other areas.
Madam Mayor. Jamie, I have a couple of questions here. So the first one is that as I read especially section three twenty-two seven, there are some things that are a little bit ambiguous in this. And I wonder if you talked about potentially some amendments, some of the language in here. And I'll, I'll read the ones that I particularly find a little troubling. One is that the information about short term rental amenities may be required by the clerk's office. But it doesn't, you know, why is the may? Either, either we want information about amenities or we don't, right? So explain that may to me if you. So explain that may to me if you could.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg. That gives us the opportunity to track things as granular or, you know, as we need to, based on trends that we might be seeing, based on challenges that we might be seeing. So initially, we might collect only a very high level of information. But if we find out that there are numerous parking problems that are associated as we continue to gather data that might be related to parking, then we could ask that question. And this may allows us to ask that question on the application to find out how many on-street versus off-street parking, for instance, as an example.
So you're, you're suggesting that off-street parking is an amenity, and we wouldn't otherwise know that from, because as I'm looking at this, we'd be asking for parking information already?
We would. That was just an example of things and amenities and examples of things that we might want to collect on an application. There are other things that we have seen in other locations, other cities, such as pools, for instance, treehouses, other things that might be additional liabilities that might be of concern to cities. We are not anticipating going down that road, certainly at the city of Boise. But again, if we were to see specific trends, this would allow us to potentially address that and ask those questions. But certainly, if mayor and council direct us otherwise, and to be very more specific in the ordinance, we could certainly do that.
If I could follow up, Madam Mayor. So explain to me what if we're requiring a million dollars insurance, and we're requiring that we know that there's parking so that it doesn't intrude on neighborhood integrity, or requiring we know how many bedrooms. If we knew there were extra amenities, are you suggesting that we might amend the ordinance at some point in the future to require those that have extra amenities to have increased insurance? Or I, I'm just unclear. Either we need to know there's amenities or we don't, it seems like. Either we ask the question, do you have amenities? What are they or not? Rather than we may ask you at some point if you have amenities. Does that make sense?
It does. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg. You know, I think that is a piece that we struggle with, because when we say amenities, I don't know that we need to know pool tables, for instance. Or, you know, if there's a sauna in the location. But there are amenities that from, again, not that it would require additional insurance requirements, but it might require other safety measures that the city might want to put in place. So again, certainly up to mayor and council on how you would like to direct staff on how to address this issue. But those were the types of things that we were considering as we drafted the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And then in that same section under D, it says licenses may include conditions. So where in this section is the section that talks about what conditions may be included and how that's regulated?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg. This is something that we have across many of our business licenses as an opportunity and a mechanism for us to be able to address specific challenges. So if parking was something that was a challenge with one particular, not across the board, but one particular location, then what we could do is condition that license. Again, for example, I think parking is just an easy, relatable example, especially when we look at a concentration of potentially in the north end, where it's already sometimes challenging, is that we might condition that they would only allow two on-street parking spaces for those individuals. If we received complaints, if we found that they were not following those conditions, then we could hold them accountable and could hold their license accountable for not following those specific conditions that we applied to their license.
Okay, but this is a, this is a clause that we routinely put in business licenses to give us that capability.
Correct. I, it's specifically things like catering permits. We provide conditions on alcohol licensing. We've done it with a number of licenses and is something that we have, again, as a mechanism to address specific issues if we need to do that based on a specific location.
Okay. Last question, I think. The, the section at the end of the ordinance, the state ordinance, that prohibits us from regulating the operation of a short-term marketplace. I assume that, as I'm reading that statute and definitions, that means we can't regulate the Airbnbs and the VRBOs, the folks that run the marketplace. However, in that marketplace, many of those have a license agreement that the person who rents that property has to agree to when they go online and rent. But as I've looked at those, they're not the same as a rental agreement or a lease agreement that you'd have with a long-term rental. And they don't, at least the ones I looked at, don't include the rights and responsibilities of both the renter and the lease, leasing. And so the question here is, without without regulating that marketplace, we have no way of knowing if there's an agreement in place or if, I mean, in the long-term sense, we know that long-term renters get a rental agreement and they get a lease agreement, almost always. And so, and they're regulated by fair housing. So there are regulations in place, not by us, that help ensure the life safety in that marketplace. As I'm looking at it, especially because we're not able to regulate the marketplace, we have no assurance of that. And just having a business license, as I'm looking at it, is one way to ensure that at least we know that there's a relationship there. Is that, is that fair to say? Is that, I'm trying to figure out. To answer Councilmember Bajan's question, in my own mind, why would we do this and not that? To me, there, there are protections in place in the long-term marketplace. I can't see many in place in the short term.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg. I'll do my best to kind of address some of those concerns. So please redirect me if I'm not hitting the mark. But from the long-term rental standpoint, again, that's not something that we were looking at specifically, because as you mentioned, there are other things that regulate that in some areas. However, what we're looking at is how do we know what the landscape of this looks like? Are there additional risks? Are there other impacts? And how do we ensure, as we know that this market is growing, that we know where they are, we know who those owners are? We are able to work with local contacts to mitigate some of those impacts. So within the confines of state law and what they allow us to do, and knowing that we're hearing anecdotally that there are impacts without knowing where these are and knowing the owners, those types of things, we're not able to really know what that base foundation and what that landscape looks like. So this is just really our first attempt to be able to gather that information, make sure some of those base safety measures are in place so we can get a better understanding of what this market looks like.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe to clarify my question, because I don't think we got quite there. The Fair Housing Act applies to all dwellings. It's not time-restricted. It's not thirty days or less or thirty days or more. So whatever regulations apply to long-term rentals under those statutes apply to short-term rentals. My question was, given that they're all currently regulated the same, and there's a lot more long-term rentals than short-term rentals, and the vast majority of short-term rentals that are here are already robustly insured, habitable for dwelling, et cetera, why we chose to focus on the short-term rental? So I don't know if that helps the council president, but that was the question I asked. I don't think there's a regulatory void. Fair housing is fair housing.
Okay, well, thanks. That was a great round of questioning. So we're going to move into the public hearing portion now. And as Jamie referenced, and we've heard already from questions that'll need to be answered, tonight, we'll hear public comment, both in-person and online. And then if the council so chooses, we can move this to first reading. But in between the first reading and the third reading, as is common, the ordinances are often amended before the final reading and vote. So just to explain that process, so tonight's feedback will be helpful. With that, I'm going to start. I have multiple lists.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Just, just real quick comment, and I apologize for, if this feels like a lecture. There was somebody that was in here earlier tonight, and they were really nervous about presenting, and they left. They left when we gave our round of applause. And the reason why we don't give a round of applause or get really vocals, we want to, it's really, really hard to come up here and testify. You're going to be really, really nervous, a lot of you, when you do it. I still get nervous, even talking in the microphone right now. And it's important that nobody feels like they're bullied or intimidated in that process. And that's why so many people jumped on board and said, please, please don't do that. And it's really in an effort to make sure that everybody has the ability to come up, give their three minutes the best that they possibly can without feeling like they're intimidated in the process. So I guess that's just my extra request, is that we really do try to hold to that so that people can give the best testimony that they possibly can.
Councilmember, thank you. I'm going to go through these lists. We've got about thirty or so people online. Some folks signed up in advance, but I see you in the room. So I'm going to start first with, I'll probably go every other, no, I might, I'll probably go every other one. But first, online to in-person. But first, I have Brent Matthew. Welcome, Brent.
Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for this opportunity, and I particularly commend you all for digging in on this issue. Thank you particularly for your questions and looking at the state regulations and fair housing. I've, I reside here in Boise at forty-one thirty West Plum Street. I've, I own my own property. I've stayed in the same house for thirty years. I have done short-term rentals through Airbnb for several years. I have been a super host at times with Airbnb. I was interviewed by city staff regarding some of this information and process. Me, may I come here to speak to our need to preserve our neighborhoods as being affordable? And so my concern with ordinances about short-term rentals is keeping neighborhoods residential with residents caring for their properties rather than allowing investors to take over a neighborhood, raise rents, make more money from short-term rentals than they do long-term rentals that keep people in place and give a home. From what I can tell from listening tonight and looking through, the ordinance does not really address that per se. But I would say that I am in favor of the ordinance. I think it's a good first step. I think it's a reasonable thing for the city to license. Based on my experience, I think eighty dollars per, per year would be affordable. And I think it's reasonable to ask that insurance be in place. Thank you.
And next up, we have Elizabeth Bridges.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak to you tonight. I do applaud the city council and mayor for amending the city code, for proposing to amend the city code and include this chapter twenty-two. I think it is important for a growing city to know what we're dealing with. And I think this is a really important first step. My particular concerns with regard to Airbnbs has to do with the effects on my neighborhood. And I'll describe a little bit of my situation. I live down by the river and in in the five properties, I live in a single-family home. To my side, there's another single-family home. Across from me, there's a triplex. The triplex is owned by a Boise high graduate who fishes in Alaska. When he fishes, he Airbnb's his place. And then his, the two other triplex units are also Airbnb. I live in my place. To my left, there's a single-family home, and that is short-term rented, a front and a back unit. Initially, it was just a small home. An addition was put onto it, and a secondary kitchen was put in there. And they report that they had ninety percent occupancy in twenty, twenty and twenty-twenty-one. So what I see is I see a constant flow of people in my neighborhood who I don't know. There's this pool and a hot tub in the property right next to me. So often, there's a loud party atmosphere with the concrete. It just exacerbates the noise. Often, cars park across the sidewalk, forcing the children who walk to the neighborhood elementary school to walk in the street. And when I've complained to the renters, and when I have emailed the property owners who are residing, they resided in Seattle, so they're out-of-state owners. They've accused me of harassing them and harassing their clients and issued a cease and desist order. So I had to hire a lawyer to protect myself. I've had my car keyed. I've had properties stolen off of, from my sidewalk, from my front yard. So it's affected my quality of life in a, in a very profound way. I'm a retired teacher. I've taught many students, many of the people who live in Boise over twenty-three years. And I'm a volunteer member of the community. I work regularly with Rich Rivers, with Idaho Trails Association. And I have a deep commitment to the city. And I would like to see the citizens and the students of Boise be able to afford to live in the city, work in the city, and continue to be a part of this, this great community. It's what attracted me here, and I'd like to see that sustainability and that balance in the future. So I applaud this, this measure. I think you could go farther. And thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we will go online, I think, online, David DeHaas.
Yes, Madam Mayor, he's online.
And next online will be Kelly Olson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council people. I'm against this ordinance for the following reasons. You say in the resolution that many people are dying from short-term rentals. Where's this data that people are dying? You said this is a major reason to bring this ordinance, but where are these deaths? You complain about a lack of rentals for the residents, but how does taking money out of the pockets of owners create more rentals? It does not. In fact, this policy creates the opposite. Rentals are lacking because demand for homeownership caused by low interest rates and the move-in rate from out-of-state people. You won't stop people from moving here and buying homes. This ordinance is just more government intervention at the expense of the citizens. Creating more regulation creates more expense of city staff and causes more burden for the rental owner. This will do nothing to keep people safe. If you want to keep people safe, then you would truly overhaul your small cell wireless ordinance and do what Eagle Idaho and Dalton Gardens have done. You would legislate out the dangerous small cells.
I'm going to ask you to stick.
You would wire the city with a resident owner of fiber. Excuse me?
I'm going to ask you to stick to the current topic.
I am sticking to it. I would like to put time back on the clock, please.
You've drifted into another ordinance issue, so if you.
This is my time, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
If you'd restrict your comments to the topic at hand, I'd appreciate.
I am tying this all in. Please give me my time back, please. If you want to know where short-term rentals are, yet you do not know where the thousands of small cell towers are going to be because you failed to demand locations from Verizon. You have willfully ignored court cases that show that you are not preemptive to regulate small cells, and eighteen thousand documents that show harm by small cells and tower locations. It's about keeping people safe. We would be looking more at that issue, because that's going to create a lot of harm and already has. You've already had AFib and brain cancer already caused by these towers. Short-term rentals are not a problem. Small cells are. You continue to ignore this by putting the city residents, including you, at risk for brain cancer, AFib and more.
All right.
Please reject this ordinance. This is not the city's business.
Thank you. I'm going to ask everybody to stay on topic tonight. We've got a lot of folks that I want to give you all the chance to talk. And out of respect for each of us that came in person and respect for each of us that's here, we're going to follow the rules that we have as a city, and that's what creates a fair playing ground. And that is to keep your comments restricted to the ordinance that council is considering tonight. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. With that, I will move to Kelly Olson.
Yeah, I'm coming.
Oh, you're good.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Kelly Olson. I reside at thirteen oh seven North Thirteenth Street. I own this home. I've lived here thirty-four years. I live one block from Hyde Park, where we have a lot of amenities, and these amenities draw visitors. And so we've seen a rapid rise of short-term rentals. And I want to discuss the nuisance behavior that I have witnessed firsthand, again, living here thirty-four years. We, in a two-block radius of my home, we have approximately five to six short-term rentals. It depends on whether one of these units is being offered on one of the platforms at any given time. It depends on whether one of these units is being offered on one of the platforms at any given time. One of them is operated in my alley. And it is very frequent to see cars parked illegally in our alley, blocking ass access. I have had people enter my backyard who are short-term visitors at these rental units to pick produce from my garden, pick flowers from my yard. I experienced, and my family experienced getting smack in the middle of a full-scale police, Boise Police Ada County Sheriff raid back in twenty nineteen, which occurred because we had out-of-state fugitives residing at a short-term rental across from my home. That was a very unnerving experience. And at the time, the Boise Police, who, after the three-hour episode, which involved guns, no actual shooting, but guns were drawn because they were trying to escape capture. We had police debrief some of the neighbors and tell us that it was their observation that they are likely to see an increase in crime related to short-term rentals. Because these type of people, fugitives, certainly can have more unanimity or anonymity by residing in short-term rentals as opposed to downtown hotels, motels. So I think there is a lot of nuisance behavior that won't be corrected by this ordinance. But I think it's a start to better understand where these units exist and that we would have a point of contact. Because right now, I, I know all my immediate neighbors, but you know, we don't know who owns these units. So I very much support this ordinance. I appreciate it, you bringing it forward. And I think it's a good beginning to get a better grasp of what's going on with these rentals and how they're changing our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up, we'll take Keith Brien online. Well, unless Keith's here, you, Keith just signed up in advance, so I'm, I expect him to be online.
Madam Mayor, he's online.
Okay, great. And then after that, if you'll just get ready, William Nixon online, unless you're here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Again.
Hi, this is Keith Brien. I've lived in Boise for nine years and I do own rental properties within the city. I'm against the ban on, ban or restriction on short-term rentals. The short-term rentals provide a much-needed flexible lodging option to many types of renters, including people coming to work in Boise temporarily and residents that may need to vacate their primary residence. I don't see a need for a short-term rental-specific regulation as there are already nuisance laws in place that can be used to maintain health and safety on any part, on any property in the city if an issue arises. This can be found in City Code Section four dash one dash one nuisances and four dash one dash five notice of hearing for unspecified nuisance. I believe the city's time would be better spent enabling more ADUs to be built by removing the deed restriction that requires the primary dwelling or ADU to remain owner-occupied. This excludes many property owners from being able to build needed housing units within Boise. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And William Nixon.
Hi, Madam Mayor, council members. I appreciate you letting me have a chance to speak. I want to stick to a few things that were missed during the presentation by, I believe her name was Nikki. I apologize if I, if I got that incorrect. One of the portions of the state law that was left out of the discussion. It says in Title sixty-seven, Chapter sixty-five, that a short-term rental or vacation rental shall be classified as a residential land use for zoning purposes, subject to all zoning requirements applicable, applicable thereto. The speaker continuously talked about these being business licenses, which would create a de facto zoning area, a commercial area essentially, where something that might currently be zoned R one A, R one B, R one C would now be subject to a business license. And I want to remind you that the Boise zoning code states in eleven oh one oh two that the enactment of the code shall not terminate or otherwise affect rights, variances, or permits acquired or authorized under prior code. What's going to happen, one of the council members, I, I apologize for not knowing which one, spoke about two different classes of ownership from long-term rentals to short-term rentals. This, these ordinances would be creating an unfair system where people who own short-term rentals would be classified differently, having to license as a business. And long-term renter, rental owners would not have to be licensed as a business. That is a, is completely against the Fifth Amendment, the Constitution and various other things. Furthermore, the Idaho Supreme Court has weighed in on this in Pine Haven Planning versus Brooks, one thirty-eight Idaho, eight twenty-six, eight twenty-nine, pages three D, six sixty-four, six sixty-seven. They argued, the HOA tried to define short-term rentals as a business. The Idaho Supreme Court shot that down in agreement with the Texas Supreme Court. I realize we're not in Texas, but Idaho has agreed that these are residential purposes. Further, the IRS addresses rental incomes as residential purposes. It's, it's reported on a specific form. So all legal indications are these are residential purposes. Yet Boise is attempting to go against state law that says this is a residential purpose and wants to license it as a business. I believe that Boise is opening itself up to a massive lawsuit. And just for reference, I'm a twenty-seven-year real estate broker, a member of the National Association of Realtors and the Boise Regional Realtors here. And I've been a broker here in Idaho for about five years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, William. Okay, we'll go back to the in-person signup, John Gannon. Welcome, Representative.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, housing in Boise qualifies in, all of our housing, in every sense of the word, as being in a state of emergency. And short-term rentals have appeared throughout Boise neighborhoods, really in a number that's been unprecedented in forty years that I've lived in Boise. I have had several complaints in, in my district for regarding noise, parking in particular, late night hours that disturb the neighbors, that kind of thing. So I applaud the mayor for her effort to tackle one part of this housing emergency and I applaud the council for doing so. Housing regulation is not new. And in fact, we do regulate hotels. Idaho codes thirty-nine eighteen oh one through thirty-nine eighteen ten regulate the rights of guests and hotel, guests and hotels in relation to their guests. However, it does have a provision in it, as I recall, and I'll stand corrected, but I, there's a minimum number of units to be considered a hotel, and I think it's about a dozen. They have their own special way of evictions. That's why I'm familiar with it. And of course, we have landlord-tenant regulations that, that, that regulate those relationships. So one of the big differences I see between the long term and the short term is that the short-term people aren't there very long. So somebody backs out into the neighbor's car. They may be gone before the neighbor even realizes that, that it's happened. So regulation is something that thinks appropriate. The, the problem being with the short-term, who do you call who's responsible, that kind of thing, comes up. And so knowing who is responsible and some of the provisions in this ordinance do require that, I think is really important. If the ordinance isn't perfect, tweak it, but I think you need to do something. And I would point out too, the diagrams of the houses of all of our houses are already at the assessor's website. You, you can access them and you can find out what my house looks like. But this may be a little more detailed, but it is already public unless you give the assessor a reason not to put it on there. Such as threats or something like that. We are in emergency. This is one part of the problem and thank you for considering it.
Okay, next up, we have Judy and Brett Wilkinson here in the room, I think, because you signed up. Welcome, come on up.
Hi.
And then we will have online Dawn May and then Amy Goodrick.
Hi, Madam Mayor, City Council people, everyone in the room. My name is Judy Wilkinson. This is my husband Brett. This hits us kind of near and dear to our hearts. I lost my parents a few years ago. They were very much invested in real estate, did not believe in buying into the market. So I, oh, I had some property I, I got from them and sold in another part of the state, brought it here, bought real estate where I live and where I love. And I bought one specific house to run as a short-term rental. I, for five years, let it be a long-term rental to a relative. She graduated from university, moved out this, last year. And we're able to bring this dream of mine to run a short-term rental. I'm a retired registered nurse and so I love to serve. And so my, my Airbnb is on a platform. It's a few blocks from the university. And I'm a super host already, just started in September. So I kind of feel a little bit like we're being vilified here as homeowners, as people who like to rent our homes. Because I tried long-term rentals and I feel like I could not keep the property the way I believed it should be kept. I, I feel like I wouldn't want to live, if I wouldn't want to live there, I wouldn't want to rent it to somebody else. And sometimes long-term rentals become a little not well-taken care of. I have a couple of neighbors, I feel like we are being told we're poor neighbors. I do not believe that to be so. I'm on a first-name basis with both my neighbors on either side. They know me, they know how to reach me. I know them, I know how to reach them. I'm a good neighbor. My people park in the garage. I have a two-car garage. My, my long-term renter parked on the street. So I do not interfere with neighborhood parking. I feel like, as far as noise is concerned, my, I have rules about quiet time from ten at night till seven in the morning. None of the BFU kids are doing that on the weekends, I can tell you that much. So I feel like we're being vilified and we're being told that this is the way short-term rentals are. And I feel like that it's being run by a lot of very responsible people who keep their properties very neat, very clean, very safe. And my other concern is I don't think this will fix our housing shortage. Airbnbs are one percent of your market. If they all went right back onto the market as long-term rentals, this would not fix Boise's housing problem. I got those statistics from AirDNA and from the Census Bureau. We have about a hundred thousand units in Boise and about one thousand Airbnb or short-term rental units. And I also have great concerns about any violation of this being a misdemeanor that you are going to get criminalized homeowners and taxpayers. So, thanks so much. I appreciate you.
Madam Mayor, quick question.
Sure. Is it Judy? Do you mind taking a question from the councilmember?
Mr. Halliburton.
Thank you. I'm not used to being called Mr. Halliburton. One, thank you for your testimony. Thank you for being a good host.
Sorry, I'm nervous.
And I think it's important, you know, that people don't get categorized as a villain. My question, I guess, for you is the regulations as written right now, if they were to be implemented, would that affect your business in a negative way? Or is it that your concern is that this is one step and that if further steps are taken, that's when it will negatively affect your business? Is it this one or is it the fear of something in the future?
Good, good question. I, I personally do not have a problem with being licensed or you knowing where my business is, or you know, where my Airbnb is. I have a concern about you telling me, oh, there's too many in this neighborhood. It's affecting the neighborhood, so we're going to cut that down to two people can only have it in this four. I'm concerned that there will be regulations telling me I could no longer run my private property how I feel see fit. Especially if I'm a good neighbor about my property and a good taxpayer, so.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Judy, thanks for your answer and just, I just want everybody to feel super comfortable. We are all people. And as Jimmy, Councilmember Halliburton.
Mr. Halliburton.
Mr. Halliburton said earlier, you know, he, he's come up at times and gets nervous. There are times when I start scribbling my own notes and I'm getting nervous and I have to direct these meetings every week. So we are all people that love our, the place that we've chosen to call home deeply. I appreciate that everybody's here and want you to feel very comfortable stepping up, having your say, having a back and forth, knowing that there's, there's no messing up as long as you follow the rules of decorum. So thank you very much. Um, I'm going to check the time. We're going to take a couple more and then we'll take a quick break. How about Chris? I can't fully read your last name. I'm sorry. So I'm just going to go with Chris, who lives at La, on La Fontana. It's, I think your last name starts with a G.
Hi, Madam Mayor and council members. We actually signed up together. My name is Sybil Gorla and we both are residents here at Boise. We own property in Boise, both long-term and short-term. And we are opposed to this ordinance for a few different reasons. Number one, we believe it adds extra unnecessary red tape for homeowners who are already fronting the cost of escalating property taxes. And I mean, at the end of the day, it also, it also takes a lot of work to rent a property. Whether this order, through this ordinance or not, it already takes work to make sure the house is up to code, to make sure that it's fitting the standards of Airbnb. For example, we put our property on Airbnb and Airbnb has its own list of regulations that every single host needs to follow in order to comply. And something, Councilmember Clegg, you asked about Airbnb and the rental agreements and liability. Airbnb covers the renter and the rentee. So there's definitely assurances in place that if damages happen, that the, the rentee will pay the renter. If the renter does not uphold a good hospitable home, they will also be in trouble for that as well. So one of the things that, you know, bothers me completely with this ordinance as well as the misdemeanor charge for homeowners for not complying with the ordinance. I think that's something that is really out of bounds for what this is calling for. I could understand a fine, but to put it to a misdemeanor, I think that's completely uncalled for. Just like the other community member was talking about, it, it's not all about noise disturbances and not all about parking issues. You get that with long-term parking as well. Whether you're, I know a lot of people live in Boise that have lived here for a long time and they're very concerned about their neighborhoods and rightfully so. I want to be able to sleep quietly at night. I don't want to deal with any headaches as well, so I'm all on board for that. And we do our part as homeowners, as renters, as people renting out short-term to ensure that the guests that we're accepting into our homes are people who are going to uphold those standards and that are going to abide by the rules we set for our home. And without that in place, we're, we're happy, you know, we're happy to kick people out who don't abide by that. That's not, that's not an issue. So when it comes, when it comes to this, short-term rentals are not just for tourists. They're for frontline workers, they're for nurses, they're for people who need somewhere out of their home. So they're still providing homes for our community members here in Boise. And we want to continue being able to provide that without all the red tape that comes from being a part of this ordinance. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. And are you testifying as well? Sybil.
I just wanted, Sybil, thank you so much for coming down. It's great to see you. I just wanted to answer that question around a misdemeanor as, as the penalty in this. We're constrained by state law in how we can penalize for folks who are not in compliance with the laws of the city and infractions are not one of those ways that we're able to gain compliance and penalize. So where sometimes it would make more sense to have an infraction, we're just not allowed that under state law. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, I've got, I know there are more than three of you that want to talk, but I've got three more that signed up on, on the piece of paper here. So we're going to take these and then take a break. And then those of you that, maybe there's another piece of paper you signed up on, I'll get that. Otherwise, we'll start having people come up as we filter through folks in the room and online. And I'm going to ask, oh wait, I'll do that after. Okay, next up is Chris Runyon. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to, to let the public speak about this. So yeah, my name is Chris Runyon, I'm a homeowner and I support this ordinance. I'm also a member of Protected Boise Neighborhoods, a group of local homeowners, renters, that have been advocating for common sense regulations. Many people don't mind if our neighbor occasionally rents out their home because we know our neighbors and we know how to contact them. What we have concerns with is the number of investor-owned short-term rentals representing little more than a revolving door of strangers coming in and out of our neighborhood. Data provided by host compliance showed that the number of short-term rentals in Boise has tripled in the last five years. Where will it be, where will it be in five more years? Many of these properties are listed under an LLC, offering little in the way for neighbors to contact the owner about complaints. The permit requirement of this ordinance would provide neighbors with the information needed to contact the neighbor. In 2020, a family renting the short-term rental in Valley County experienced a near tragedy due to carbon monoxide poisoning with four people requiring specialized care. This type of event does not need to happen in Boise before requiring common sense safety requirements such as smoke detectors and CO detectors. Boise Dev reported that one in five properties sold were purchased by non-residents. Why can't we require those purchased by investors to be long-term rentals? This would provide the benefit to the community by maintaining the affordable housing supply, reduce the burden of taxpayer-funded affordable housing projects, and help retain the integrity of our neighborhoods. Every investor-owned short-term rental is one less home for a local resident. Since 2017, many in the short-term rental industry have told us all that Idaho state law doesn't allow for any regulations. This is not true and is why cities and counties in Idaho currently have regulations. The city of Sandpoint actually limits the number of short-term rentals. By having too many of these properties in my neighborhood, this immediately reduces the number of people interested in buying my house. Part of my property rights as a homeowner is that my neighbor, what my neighbor does should not reduce the value of my property. In addition to the current ordinance, I urge you to add notification requirement to the nearby neighbors. Identify if it's a primary residence. Every illegal claim of homeowner's exemption is $1,200 in lost tax revenue. Require the permit to be posted near the front door so I can tell my kids not to sell school rental tickets there. Require individual permits for each short-term rental unit. Some properties are operating a home and an ADU as short-term rentals at the same time. And lastly, let's just try to find a balance maybe between these investor short-term rentals and affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, David Klinger.
Good evening, David Klinger. I'm a board member of Boise Working Together and I live at 1404 North 24th Street. I served in government for 35 years at the federal level. We always believed that the best governance rested on having the best, the most up-to-date, the most comprehensive information possible. We felt that the best decisions generally rested on the best data. And on this short-term rental issue, up until recently, you haven't had that data. You need it. Mayor McLean, I want to commend you for your leadership on this issue. I think what you're considering tonight is a good first step. It probably should go farther, but it starts to get you the information you need and brings some order out of disorder. Short-term rentals are business transactions between two parties where profit is being generated in non-commercial residential zones. They should be registered, regulated, and taxed like any other business transaction. I think you, I think the city is entitled to know certain basic information. How many short-term rentals are in this city? Where are they located? And when do they come and go? What dollar volume is being generated by this new industry in our midst? Are minimum standards being met insofar as public health, public safety, police and fire protection, and compliance with existing zoning regulations? You know, in recent years, I've felt like you as city government probably knew more about how many licensed dogs exist in this city than you know about what is going on with short-term rentals and their impacts. I think the short-term rental ordinance starts to remedy this information deficiency and I commend you for this first step. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, last on this list, April Hoy. Welcome, April. And then after this, for those online too, we'll take a quick break and then I'll start up with a couple folks online.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I'd like to speak briefly in support of the proposed ordinance which would regulate short-term rentals. Over the course of my adult life spent in Boise, I've watched the rental market grow less and less affordable. It's a trend that has reached devastating heights in recent years. Short-term rentals, turning homes into hotel rooms, is just one aspect of how the market treats houses as a tool for making money rather than as for housing people. It's heartening to see the city council take steps toward addressing this issue. I would urge you to pass this ordinance and to continue working to help Boise in struggling to find and keep a place they can afford to live in Boise and to value the right to housing over the right to profit regardless of social cost. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Okay, with that, we will take a break. I'll say five, six minutes, realistically, we'll come back at eight.
That's a bigger thing. There's a lot of artificially low interest rates. There's lots of lots of factors that affect the housing market and that's a real thing that needs to be addressed. But I don't think that it didn't seem to me that this did anything to address the the cost of housing. And then also, as far as the neighborhood disturbance thing, so. I actually, it was my garage and I've never heard a single problem with my guests ever, and I'm on the same property as them. And there's, I found out there's another around the corner is an Airbnb in my neighborhood too. I didn't even realize it, had no idea because there's never been any issues at all ever. I actually think that from my my experience, then you have better neighbors as short term rentals because they're they're going to get re- the. I review every single person that comes to my place. They get a review. And my normal neighbor that has a loud dog or that, you know, has an issue that that I have issues with, I don't have to review them and I'm stuck next to them. And so, you know, I feel like it's better to have short term for for the for neighborhood nuisance issues. This is my personal experience, but so, yeah, I'm highly opposed. Vote against this, please. It's beneficial and helpful to our economy for working class people like myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go online to Esther Seha and then Amy Berryhill.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Esther Seha. My address is thirty nine oh one North Cambria Way. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments this evening as a longtime resident of Boise. I have been paying attention to the short term rental issue since Beeter was in office. And I am happy to see that we continue, or at least the city continues to explore this particular issue. I am here today to ask you to support the proposed ordinance. As stated by city staff, the proposed ordinance is nothing new in Idaho. We have other cities that have. Short term rental permit requirement. And if you were to look at other cities across the US, you would see, if you have not already, that there are many cities across the US. That require either a short term business license or a short term. Like a registration. I guess maybe a couple of things. I think to begin with, this ordinance is a start. You know, we've been talking about it and we need to move forward. I'd like to share just a brief experience that I've had with short term rentals. I do use short term rentals when I travel for personal use across neighboring states. But here in my neighborhood, there is a short term rental about a block and a half away. During the summer, it is every three days, it's different cars. Last summer, I observed as I was walking my neighborhood, one of the short term rental users take one of the two cars parked there. And park it about a half block from where I live and they left it there for about five days. I called the city and eventually, one of the neighboring neighbors put a sign up on the vehicle, letting them. Know that they needed to park their vehicle at the Airbnb. So I guess maybe just a couple of things to keep in mind. If we're serious about protecting the integrity of residential neighborhoods. Then we need to stay, take a step forward and we need to look at how we have, we can obtain better data on what. The realm of short term rentals are in the city. And I guess one other note I'd like to make, and that would be that. Most of the folks, most of the nurses, travel nurses that I know that are working in the Boise area that are renting short term rentals there for six month periods, not less than thirty days. Thank you.
Thank you. And Amy.
Yes, hi. I'm opposed to this ordinance. I had a lot of things to say tonight, but I think they've mostly been said. The reason I'm opposed is I don't feel that the ordinance addresses the concerns of the public that we've been hearing regarding disruptions, parking. Trash. So. And the biggest one is affordable housing. Short term rentals are not a part of the affordable housing problem and. Some of the other issues that have been brought up may be legitimate case by case. But in the neighborhood that we have are. Short term rentals, our properties are the nicest properties on the block. Today was trash day and all the. Trash cans were overflowing except for ours. We have off street parking for everyone and at one point I did live in a property that we had. An Airbnb next door and it was never a problem. So I just feel like the issues that have. Brought up the reason for the ordinance aren't being addressed in the ordinance. So I'm against it.
Thank you, Amy. All right. Did you sign up on this paper as well? I'm going to go here next, sir, if you plan to talk. Go ahead.
So thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Nick Stein and my wife and I, we own both long term rental as well as short term rentals. By far, the long term rentals cause much more damage. Much more trash that we consistently have to pick up. You know, from mattresses thrown out on the street to trash all over the yard. We live in an area where. You know, it's on the bench and we've been working to go ahead and improve these properties. Just down the street, we drove down there today. There's a washing machine sitting there. There's where there's a dishwasher. Mattress. There's all sorts of trash. We actually come by with our trailer and we'll pick all that stuff up. In order to try and keep the neighborhood looking good for the short term rentals. We spend a lot of money at local businesses. We're improving one right now. I can't tell you how much money we actually just put, you know, to Grover's, to Home Depot, to multiple other. Local businesses in improving that. The people that come in do the same. They come in, they eat at restaurants, they go to shows. You know, we've had band members for, what is it Fortnite? Or Treefort. We've had, we've had people come in to go ahead and. You know, audition for the Boise Symphony. We've had all sorts of people come in and they're coming there for specific reasons. They're not coming there to party. We don't allow partiers. We review them, as was said, and. The neighbors or our short term rentals are so much better as far as for the community than what long term rentals do to the properties. So, thank you.
Okay, come on up.
Hello. My name is Julie Holby. I live at thirty seven oh seven Ness purse. And I'm very much in favor of the licensing of short term rentals. I came across a document that contains many examples of this type of ordinance for many places around the state. They include Coeur d'Alene. Bonner County, Sandpoint, Hayden, Hayden Lake, Driggs, Rexburg, McCall Cascade and Island Park. Of these, I think only Island Park is yet to be passed. The ordinances you are considering tonight for Boise need the detail. Which compares to what I've read from some of these other places. It will affect the enforceability and the outcomes. I've seen definitions of a good neighbor policy about self inspections, about local representation. I've seen requirements from municipal taxes, biweekly ninety six gallon garbage services. And I'm going to just read you some of this language. Hopefully I won't run out of time. In a permit procedure, they're asking name, address. Stating maximum occupancy. And stating exactly where the parking spots are. I think that would be a very important thing. Off street parking shall be provided for each four persons of occupancy. The inability to provide the required off street parking will reduce the permitted occupancy. And then this does go down in this particular community, Bonner County, does say they can do an infraction. After receiving two violations, the county may issue an infraction. So that may be something particular to the locale. Particularly neat, I think, is one that says about the responsible party. A responsible party must be available twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. For the purpose of responding within sixty minutes to complaints regarding the condition of the short term rental. Or the conduct of the occupant of the short term rental and their guests. Number two, a responsible party shall obtain the name, address and contact number of each occupant of a short term rental. We just heard a story about a criminal. So there is a lot of specificity in some of these documents that. I think really deserves a lot of scrutiny. In Coeur d'Alene, they have a definition of a good neighbor policy shall mean the rules of conduct, best practices. And standards of respect prepared by the planning department and required to be provided to occupants and their guests utilizing short term rentals. In other words, we're supposed to be nice to them.
Julie, you've gone a bit over. Okay, thank you for your testimony.
All right, but it's just, it's just. It's widely utilized. Thank you.
Thanks. And sir, I'm going to ask you to stop with the hand gestures or to move towards the back of the room because we're asking for respect for all speakers. I, sir, I'm, I'm just, it was. Sure, thanks. It was before that as well. So I'm going to ask, this is the warning. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, um, thank you for that. It's very distracting when folks are making gestures behind the speaker. I was also going.
Do you have a question for Julie?
No, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to ask if Julie can send us her testimony. If you had additional things to say.
Julie, you can come on up.
I, Madam Mayor, I don't think that's really necessary. It was just one, since your time was up, I was just curious if you had more to say. That was all.
Julie, thank you, but you can Julie.
Email to citycouncil@cityofboise.org if you had more notes that you wanted to share.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I don't think so. You could leave it there. I'm not sure what it is, to be honest.
Yes.
Just a point of order on the closed written record. You may want to confer with Mary about that.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, the the written record, I think, is closed, so I just don't.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings. Regarding the public testimony and public hearing portion, that once we close the public testimony, I believe that it would be a closed record.
Oh, sure, but the written record isn't currently closed.
I I believe at the close of public testimony and when it comes before deliberation for the council, that's that that would be when the record is closed.
When, when we move to deliberate.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, let's see. I was going to go this way. Ma'am?
My name is Bobby Aitchison and I live at three zero one nine North Thirty Fifth Street. I worked in a small social service agency for forty years. What that meant was no retirement, no healthcare, no anything when I retired. So I had to take care of myself and the way that I did that was through purchase of properties through forty years. And so I am the face, one of the faces of a short term rental landlord. My rental income is my retirement plan and my sole source of income. I have ten kitchens. I say that because the triplex has three kitchens. And I've always tried to do the right thing. In my profession, I have had a heart for providing appropriate. Housing for people who find it difficult to get housing. So forty percent of my properties. Are rented to, and they're not all short term properties or short term rentals. Some are, some aren't. But forty percent of my rentals are, go towards the previously incarcerated, the disabled. I have two that are on the sex offender registry. All kinds of people need homes. And so what I found is that Airbnb, I hate Airbnb. I hate short term rentals. And yet I do it because I need it as a tool and there are tenants that need it as a tool. I've rented to two sisters remodeling their homes and a family that had a fire. And travel nurses and people who are divorcing, people who are in transition. And so they need short term transitional housing. And I need to be able to provide that from time to time. Like I said, it's my least favorite way to rent. But I do it because, for example, I have a tenant who's been there for eight months. Her, her needs have changed and so she's moving out the end of this month. It's a terrible time to try to rent and so I may have to Airbnb that property for the people who want to come ski for a month before I have an opportunity. To, to rent it again as a, as a, as a longer term rental. So it, one thing I can say about Airbnb is that it's actually brilliant in holding people accountable. That whole system of I rate you, you rate me. It's a pretty good system. It motivates me to be good. I, a good landlord, not that I need Airbnb to do that for me, but it works real pretty well. I evaluate the tenants, the tenants evaluate me and everybody gets to see everybody's ratings. And so there's a level, a level of accountability there that I like. Licensing, paperwork, fees, detailed diagrams. All of these things will push out the small independent landlords and it will encourage. The property managers and the investors, the people that have time to write those detailed diagrams. Because I got it when one person mentioned it. I got on the Assessor's website, the diagrams for my own properties are unrecognizable. They're so basic. They're basically. Not true. And, and my name and address as the owner of every property is, is listed on the, on the website. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, quick question.
Sure.
Bobby, is Bobby? So you're saying that you think that the regulations will be too hard for your smaller. Owners to handle and it will favor larger investors who have the means to take care of all of those regulations. Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, Mr. Halliburton. I, I do believe those, those people doing one bedroom or. For me, I, I only have two that I do as short term rentals. They're already a pain. They already cost a lot of money and to add to it. Will, will make me less able or motivated to, to participate.
And Madam Mayor, just a quick follow up. As far as those regulations that make it prohibitive for a smaller owner, is there? is there a specific part of the regulations that makes it difficult? Is it all of them? Is it one or two that are really the ones that are holding you up?
The one that I really groaned over was that, was that having to have a detailed plan of your house. They're, they're hard, they're hard to do. $80, it's not a lot, but it's paperwork, and it will just drive the prices of things up. Already, if you get on Airbnb, only half the price you see is, you're paying twice that already. So it will, it will make it cost more.
Thank you. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna go back online for a moment. How about Don May?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Well, thank you for listening to me. Don May, 3108 West Stewart Avenue in Boise. For small mom-and-pop businesses like me who do both long-term and short-term rentals, it is quite an understatement to say that it can be quite challenging to keep up with the myriad of detailed paperwork. And I do mean detailed paperwork and deadlines for the following. This is already what exists for us. Property taxes, advertising, leases, utilities, there's a bunch of utilities, property insurance, liability insurance, umbrella insurance, payroll, if you happen to have somebody come in and do your cleaning for you, payroll taxes, unemployment insurance, routine maintenance, unexpected maintenance, upgrades to the property, building permits and development fees. This is just a few that I thought about the top of my head. Adding additional paperwork might seem like a small thing. After all, we only have to pay $80. We only have to fill out a form that indicates the owner of the property. We only have to hire a local agent. The local agent only has to have a physical address instead of protecting her privacy with a P.O. box. We only have to hire a local management company. We only have to get a $1 million liability insurance policy. Granted, most of us hopefully have that already. We only have to have a, have to supply a copy of this set insurance policy to the city. We only have to create and send in a copy of our floor plan, a plan for the yard, and a plan for the outbuildings. We only have to provide a list of amenities. We only have to provide a list of marketing platforms we use and update it immediately if it changes. We only have to provide a parking map and a map of treehouses and pool tables and saunas, but only if the requests change over time. We only have to regulate where our guests park, if asked. We only have to do an update, all this, once a year or whenever things change. We only have to keep track of these changes and ensure the paperwork is submitted on time each and every time it's due, I'm assuming. When does this madness end? I urge you to consider just how much paperwork and regulation is necessary. Ask yourselves, where should you draw the line? As an example, should we ask drivers to submit a written report every time they plan to use a public street with their automobile along with a copy of their insurance card? Why not, I ask? After all, having the information will certainly help police departments plan for peaks of demand on the roads. It will also help ensure everyone is insured. Of course, this idea is obviously nonsense, just like I believe the proposed resolution is nonsense. Thank you very much for your time and patience.
Thank you. Next up, Amy Goodrich, I think also online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Amy, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Firstly, I wanted to say that I truly appreciate that the city is considering how to intervene in the short-term rental economy. And to some extent, I do think that licensing is a good first step. But I really think we need to step back and ask, what is the problem that we are trying to solve with this ordinance? And so with that in mind, I, it's just disappointing and tone deaf to me that the main thrust of what's been drafted is a handful of mostly meaningless administrative blanket requirements that are focused on insurance. Because to me, that is completely missing the mark. And the problem that we need you to address here is that as a community, Boise is experiencing a crisis-level shortage of long-term rental housing, while commercial short-term rentals are proliferating in residential neighborhoods unchecked. And by failing to even acknowledge that dynamic, we are really missing a prime opportunity to craft a meaningful ordinance here. So I do think that it's important not to vilify short-term rentals as a whole, particularly after hearing some other testimonials. And to that end, I really, I would like to point out that there are two very distinct types of owner participants in the short-term rental economy. And the effect to a neighborhood's integrity or to the public welfare of an owner-occupant choosing to use an extra bedroom or an otherwise unoccupied A.D.U. at their primary residence as a short-term rental, those effects are miniscule, and they are completely different than the effects experienced by a neighborhood of a significant amount of homes being bought, held, and operated solely as unoccupied commercial short-term rentals by offsite investors. And it's the second type, that second type of short-term rental that is transforming residential housing in our neighborhoods into de facto hotels. And they are operating completely outside of hotel district zoning or regulation. And that is the problem that any city ordinance regarding short-term rentals needs to focus on reading it. And so fortunately, there are a lot of large cities that have already caught on to this, and they have recognized the distinction between the owner-occupant and the absentee investor models of short-term rental. And those cities have written very challenge-resistant, targeted ordinances that, for example, just prohibit paid lodging of less than 30 days at properties that are not owner-occupied, for example. So this is not groundbreaking legal formulation. And I respectfully urge the city to please re-envision short-term regulations and keep two key things in mind when you're doing that. One, the real problem to be addressed is commercial short-term rentals that are contributing to a crisis-level housing shortage in the city. And they're turning residentially-zoned properties into hotels. And you have here a real opportunity to take a measurable step to alleviate that. And number two, neighbors that are privately occasionally renting out otherwise empty spaces in their own occupied primary residences, that's separate from the problem. Boise needs a targeted short-term rental ordinance that limits the ability or impacts the financial feasibility for absentee investors to buy up desperately needed residential housing and convert it into unregulated, unoccupied hotel businesses. So please go back to the drawing board on this one.
Thanks, Amy. Next up online, we have Pam Romer. See, while we're waiting for Pam, do you plan to testify? Come on up. And then, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman.
I'm, I'm still listening. Thank you.
Oh, hi Pam. We didn't realize that you were there. If you'll hold on just a second, somebody here in person has started her testimony, and then we'll go right back to you. I'm so sorry about that.
Sorry, Pam. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, for the opportunity to talk today. My name is Elizabeth, and I live on 28th Street. I am opposed to the ordinance as I feel that infringes on my private property rights and my right to rent in the way that suits me and my family. Recently, I left my job in November because my daycare costs were nearly $2,000 a month. To me, it didn't make economic sense for me to be getting burnt out at work and being away from my children. So I made the decision with my husband that I would leave my job and pull my kids out of daycare so that I could spend more time with them, and we would rent our, I have an A.D.U. and a guest house at the back of our property. I have been hurt and disappointed how short-term rental hosts have been vilified. As I'm a five-star super host, I make banana bread for my guests. I make homemade treats. Our house has never looked better because I'm really proud, and I am looking for that five-star experience for our guests. Previously, we did have long-term tenants in there, and we had such issues. She was so messy. There was trash everywhere. She had weird, weird, weird animals, multiple reptiles in the house, and it took me about three weeks to get that stench out. I think there's really something to be said for, you know, hosts who are proud of their property and for our right to rent in the way that really suits our family and our economic situation. You know, Airbnb has been a fantastic platform. They provide up to $1 million worth of air cover for hosts and for the renters. They, there are a lot of checks and balances to make sure that bad situations don't occur. And, you know, I've been hearing what other people are saying, and I feel that there are a few anecdotal scare tactics that have been happening. But that is not representative of the majority of hosts out there. I think a lot of hosts are actually very proud of the work that we do. And we really work to create a community and to make sure that our neighborhoods are really represented and everything's really neat and tidy. So I really hope that you consider the impact that this would have on people like myself who have, you know, decided to quit their job to stay at home with children because this is my only form of income. And daycare costs are through the roof, as we all know. So I, I am opposed, and I would really like you to reconsider, particularly in light of the dearth of data. I feel that this will not adequately address the shortage of housing crisis. And I think more data is needed to find something that's more tailored and bespoke to properly address that issue.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And thank you so much for sharing your experience, Elizabeth. Which part of the licensing do you think would be onerous or violate your private property rights? Or is it just the whole thing?
I agree with the lady, was it Bobby? You know, I think that this really will favor large-scale investors, and it's really going to be onerous and cause unnecessary red tape and burden for people like myself who don't have the means or resources. I don't know how to draw maps. I don't even, wouldn't even know who to talk to about doing that. I have two children that I'm trying to look after as well as dealing with turnover, and I just feel that the unnecessary red burden will just be too much for me. I also feel that the criminalization aspect of it really is, makes me feel nervous as well.
Thank you so much. Madam Mayor, I just want to provide a little bit of follow-up on that criminalization aspect. I misspoke earlier. Apparently, I was, I was confused on civil penalties and infractions on that criminal piece. But what our licensing department does currently is they always try to gain compliance first with our businesses in everything that they license. They're diligent, they're kind, they offer help. They're not doing this to give people criminal penalties. That's like, that's not the point. That's the farthest thing away from the point. So I just want to make that abundantly clear. That's not the kind of city we are. We're not here to try to trap people into becoming criminals. Not, not the end game here. And this kind of keeps coming up is this issue of providing floor plans. So I'm kind of curious to maybe follow up with staff on what that looks like and what landlords could expect if that's, if this is something that we end up adopting. Thank you, Elizabeth. You can sit down if you want.
Thank you.
Thanks. And just while that's coming up, the one question I'd add to that for the floor pen pieces, is there a way, if we move forward, to streamline that? So someone said that they're already on the county assessor, was it the assessor's website? If that's the case, you don't need to answer me now, but as you're looking at the floor plan issue, is there a way to provide an easy access link or something to make that more customer service-oriented? Okay, thank you very much. Would you like, would you be willing to come on up? Are you planning on talking tonight? Looking at you. Nope, I'm sorry. I was pointing to her first. What? Oh, my goodness, I forgot. I'm so sorry. Pam, Pam? Out there somewhere.
Hello.
There you are. We can hear you now.
Okay. Well, I'm Pam Romer. Oh, I have a new address. I can't remember the number, but it's West Tottenham Lane.
You don't need to give it.
Okay. We recently have gone through looking for housing, and the market is very tough out there. And I'm hearing both sides. And I'm thinking more thought needs to go into the ordinance. Regulation, I think, is good, but not where it will hurt the smaller homeowners that are using this for an income. I'm thinking it should be more regulated for the, the corporations that are buying up and making profits out of, out of Boise. Because it just seems like it might turn into Boise as a vacation spot, but not where you can live. And so I appreciate the efforts the city council is doing. And I agree, it needs to have some more thought going into this. So, thank you.
Thanks, Pam, and thanks for your patience. Appreciate it. Sorry about that.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, no, we're...
Sorry, that's back to legal counsel.
Good night, Pam. Yes.
I would like to take an opportunity to correct something. The woman who you had invited to come up had asked about written testimony. I would just like to note for the record that I misspoke in the sense of I had, was thinking this was a one-night thing, not a three-reading ordinance. So to the extent that you had asked this other woman,
Julie.
or Julie to provide any additional written testimony, I wanted to make sure that this woman was offered the same and that I could make sure I corrected myself with regards to the question you had asked.
Because it's, there are three readings, and the final vote is on the third reading, correct?
Yes. So that written testimony could be provided up until it is closed for deliberation before the council.
Yeah. Yeah. So would, did you want to speak also, or you wanted to provide rent? Perfect. Great. Okay. Thanks, Mary, for clearing that up. All right, now I'm gonna go to, is it Kristy Wolf?
I'm Kristy Wolf, and I am the host of the Big Idaho Potato Hotel in South Boise. I also build and host in several other states. In 2017, I had the number-one Airbnb rental in Hawaii for seven years. They implemented a registration that turned into regulations. Come 2020, no longer able to rent out my house legally because of the parking and all the other things owner-occupied. So now that house doesn't serve any long-term rental. All it did was take away jobs. It takes away tourism, and it sits empty. That is why I oppose any sort of restriction or registration. I also, hearing about it, I don't see what it's accomplishing. Sounds like, let's have hosts pay for us to go out and find an issue. And I think that I can maybe address some of the, the things that some of the neighbors might not know. Airbnb, at least I can speak to that platform. Airbnb has an Airbnb dot neighbors. You can go on there, and you can get in touch with any of your neighbors that you believe are having a short-term rental that you're having an issue with. They have a whole nother customer service area to help if there is a party or a dangerous situation happening. My parents rented in Pocatello. They did have this case where a felon or a criminal had stayed in some place the night before. Airbnb called, paid to have my parents' locks changed, and assisted the police in doing that. We are trying to event problems where there is none. And it doesn't seem like any of that applies to the long-term rentals, the safety things. Airbnb does ask if you have a carbon monoxide detector, that you have a fire extinguisher, all of those things. I think for all of the anecdotal, a car was parked wrong. You could go online and look at the thousands of positive reviews I have from people all over the world that come to Boise to stay in the potato. Also, the Idaho Potato Commission, on the first week of us opening, they tracked the marketing that it drummed up for Idaho and potatoes, and it was worth 2.6 million to them. So I think that there are a lot of other benefits. I also donate my places to lots of local charities, and including the Democrats. So I, I think that there's like far more good if every guest we had was calling in and letting you know how great their stay in Boise was or how it bailed them out of a horrible situation. That would far outweigh the people that are calling to complain, which might not even be from short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, one question before you go. As somebody who's operated a lot of these units, either here or in other places, what would your reaction be to a simple, clean ordinance that says, you know, no licensing, just says you have to have insurance, you have to comply with local parking rules, your, your property has to be habitable, it has to contain a carbon monoxide detector, et cetera? your your property has to be habitable, it has to contain a carbon monoxide detector, et cetera?
I think that the um cost of a team keeping track of that is kind of crazy. We also already have it. And because so many of the properties are so different, that's what I find with mine being really unique, that it cuts me out because you're going for the the normal place, the lowest common denominator. So the really unique things that Airbnb is known for get left to the side and and we can't operate. Also, I would say about the parking is most guests are using Uber versus I have two brothers that live in town that have three teenage drivers. They have four vehicles. When they go on vacation, they rent one car. They don't rent four.
There was a question about the ordinance and so we got your answer from that. So I'm gonna move us on. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ellis Nanny.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for having me tonight and thank you for the staff that has put together everything. Um, I'm also opposed to the ordinance uh presented tonight. Prior to um the council meeting tonight, I was sitting at Java with about twenty other hosts who were there representing even more who were unable to make it. And the general mood and consensus was that there's a feeling of being targeted. And I think that's where a lot of the pushback is coming from the host where I think on your end, it seems like it's just a simple simple fee registration, simple process. But when as has come up many times tonight, when we've talked about the long term rentals and how many there are there. And um we talked about the hotels and the motels and how they're not regulated in the same way with the requirement of the the licensing. You know, it's it makes you wonder why are the short term rentals being questioned if the if the question is public safety, if it is the the safety of the renters. And so when you have um that kind of uh imbalance in the way this is being applied across rental situations, um it does seem like we are being targeted. And it begs the question, like, where is this coming from? And who's motivating this? And I do understand there's a lot of people here who have been have testified that they've been negatively impacted by a short term rental nearby. And I empathize with that. And I think that everyone should have the capacity to feel safe and feel secure in your neighborhood and your home. But I think that we can go tit for tat and anecdotal stories all day. And I agree with the the gentleman who came up earlier and said that the best policy is based on facts and based on good data. And all we want is good facts and good data in order to move forward with this ordinance, which have not been presented. And I know, and as Christie kind of mentioned, um, it seems like you're putting the burden on the host to fund your campaign to try and find the evidence to say that, yeah, these anecdotal stories are more than that. And I do think that there are plenty of other ways of setting up systems if we wanted to brainstorm and come up with that uh to find ways of tracking this information and finding if there is actually a problem that needs to be addressed. Because the only reason that we would even put forward an ordinance is if there's a massive problem. If one percent of, I mean, everyone knows that, yeah, there are guests that are unruly, that are allowed, that happens, that's going to happen, and it's going to be inconvenient, but punishing ninety nine point nine percent of the hosts who are really invested in their properties. I mean, you hear it and you hear their stories and you hear how much and how proud they are of their rentals. And to put that burden on them just because of a few handful of stories, it doesn't seem fair and it doesn't seem right. And so I don't think that the problem is is that they're that they're opposed to like a registration and making sure they have insurance. We want to make sure it's coming from the right place. We want to make sure that it's equal across the marketplace. We want to make sure that um that the rules are being played equally across, no matter if you're short term rental. And just because I make mine thirty days, now all of a sudden, I'm free from that. It just doesn't seem to make sense. So thank you for your time.
How about Elizabeth, you you spoke, yeah, okay. Uh, Paul Vandenbosch? Yeah. Jefferson Street? Great, it's you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you and to everybody in the in the audience and online. Um, lots of really good uh comments tonight from both opposed and um for the ordinance. And um lots of stories like the gentleman prior to me, I'd like to empathize with people that uh that have had negative um experiences with with short term rentals near them. But for my wife and I, that has not been the case. Um, we we've had a really, really great experience being hosts on Airbnb. I mean, that story started end of two thousand sixteen. I got out of the Marine Corps, didn't know what I was going to do with my life. Um, and we bought a town or we bought a house back in our hometown um and set to work turning a um old garage into an accessory dwelling unit. Got it permitted with the city. Um, everything was up to code. All the uh insulation, the smoke detectors, all that stuff was inspected by city um city officials and it was was brought up to standard. Um, and we started renting it out to people. And we were able to have a lot of great experiences with with folks in the local community and around the country. Um, folks that were coming in to start businesses in Idaho that stayed at our place. Couples that got married and spent their wedding night there and then have come back, you know, year after year um to celebrate their um their anniversary at our place. And and being able to be invested in the in our in the lives of people in the community um has been a real blessing to our family, as well as my wife, who's been able to stay at home. She used to teach high school until we had kids and then wasn't able to do um both take care of our kids and provide the same income that she did before. And now um with short term rental um income coming into our family, she was able to do that and more. Um, unfortunately, uh, schools don't pay as much as they should. And so she was able to um make a whole lot more doing short term rentals and operating um this out of our home that she was teaching. But it also gave her the opportunity to stay home um and be with our children and be able to do that at the same time. And so I think the while I'm not opposed to like a a general license um or something like that, um, sir, you mentioned like a very bare bones, minimum requirements, something like that, I think, sounds reasonable. But what what my fear is, and Mr. Hal Burton said it before, um, that this is just the shoe in the door for more things, right? It's like what what additional things would come after? And we already see a little bit of it. And the reason I'm opposed as it currently is written is because it almost seems snuck in at the end that this is that this regulation would be or the the ordinance would be to help with long term housing problem, which I just don't think that short term rentals have as big an impact as it's been made out to um to have on the the local economy. And so I I'm opposed as it currently stands because of that tie to the long term housing market, um which I I just don't think that it it has that connection. Um, and I would encourage, I would encourage the uh city council and the mayor to um go back and look at some things that maybe were more across the board to cover hotels and some of those other things as opposed to um what some other people have said tonight. It seems targeting um local hosts. Um, and I I don't really know any of those, you know, big investors. So anyway, thank you. Sorry for going over time. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, Andrea Thornton? Welcome. I hear you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm an SDR owner in a boutique property with a boutique property downtown. I wasn't aware that there were any injuries or killings at my property, except for the marshmallow smores in the backyard. STRs provide more than people, provide more than people or families to gather. We house traveling nurses, people waiting for their homes to be built. People have had floods or fires in their homes and are waiting for their homes to be fixed. New citizens waiting for apartments or home and visitors that pour millions, if not billions of dollars into our community. Just facts. Air DNA was mentioned before. Sixty seven percent of the algorithm are Airbnb owners, nine percent are verbo, twenty four percent are both. There are a hundred and three active um STRs or Airbnb VRBOs in the area according to uh Air DNA. A year and a half ago, two years ago, before COVID, there were probably about a hundred and fifty more. Because of COVID, we've had to, a lot of people have had to sell their homes because they can't afford it. They can't afford to do SCRs. The the traffic for um Airbnb VRBO has gone way down unless you have a really beautiful property or boutique property. And uh the average um Air DNA, they say, is a two point two bedroom, so a three bedroom that houses six guests. You're not going to rent three, three hotel rooms to house a family. You want to keep them all together. And that's another, you know, added bonus for having a standalone home to rent. Um, right now, we're at seventy five percent occupancy. The average income is twenty one hundred dollars a month. So that's for Sarah and and her husband who, you know, had to quit their jobs or can't afford um daycare, things like that. It's twenty one hundred dollars that they wouldn't have had. Yes, there's a lot of expenses. But um hopefully, you know, we can all work our finances a little bit better and not lose that money. Uh, in your whereas's, you talk about insurance. And according with for me, I have property, because I own my property, a property tax, property insurance. I have a million dollars policy with Airbnb. I also have an umbrella policy. And maybe that makes me a little more responsible some other than some other people. But I have all this insurance because if something were to happen, and I know it does. I know there are shootings here in town because I hear it from the cops. I hear it from my friend who's gone through this garbage.
Madam Mayor, time.
Sorry.
Next up is Debbie Warren.
Hey, there, Mayor and uh council people. I'm gonna let my husband speak first. This is my husband Glenn. And.
Good evening. Anyway, we just wanted to say that we are opposed to this resolution that you guys are trying to pass. Mostly because once you get your foot in the door, we do believe that you will do go on as most of the people that are up uh for this resolution has stated that this is a good first step. And we think that that is exactly what this thing is all about. Now, we I recently retired from aerospace firm. And our whole goal was to build this Airbnb and so that we could come here and have some additional income in our retirement. And so we we've done a lot to satisfy our neighbors. We have noise alarms on. We monitor constantly. We get a warning that there's any noise level that's, you know, intrusive. And, you know, we've talked to our neighbors, both of our neighbors, uh, and they uh they 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 were here today to complain. But we have gotten out of our way. We've uh taken their our lights off the side so that that doesn't bother them. And like I said, we put up the noise alarms and everything. And I really, I'm really amazed that it seems like no long term uh renters ever park wrong, no long term renters ever have loud music. I'm I'm very concerned that that's going on in this town. I just don't understand it. Anyway, that's that's how we feel it. Feel vilified by you guys got someone you can pick on or the community has something that they can pick up. And they're just moving forward because we're a minority, basically. As short term renters. That's all I wanted to say.
Can I have a little bit of time also? Um, uh, we I we first came to Boise in December of two thousand eighteen. I came over here for my birthday weekend. I absolutely fell in love with the city. I fell in love with the friendly people, the mountains. I'm amazed today, even now that we're here full time, I look at the mountains, I'm taking pictures as I'm driving down the road. I'm absolutely amazed in the friendly people, the friendly culture here. Um, we started our Airbnb, like Glenn said, with the with the um intent to um live here full time. That's happening. Um, we have gone, our Airbnb supports twenty local people. I counted them up before I came here, twenty plus people that depend on us from cleaners, from maintenance to vendors that do add on experiences for us. Um, to uh uh vendors that come to us. What we do is we advertise um for the local community. We advertise events coming on on our social media page. Um, uh, businesses are now reaching out to us to say, oh, I have an event coming up. Would you please put, you know, would you put that on your page for us? Every Friday, we do that on our social media. Um, we are big supporters of the community. And if for any reason our Airbnb shut down, we would have people standing right here by us protesting or protesting on our behalf because they feel that um they feel that strongly in what we're doing for the community. Um, I'm looking forward to being more of a part of this amazing community and um I'm very opposed. We we go out of our way to do other things that non Airbnb owners would not do to blend into the neighborhood. Um, so we're continuing to do that. We vet our renters very, very, very well, as been mentioned. It doesn't, it's an Airbnb policy. We know who's staying on our property. I have access to a contact in the reservation. Within five minutes, I know if something's going wrong because of my team that's in place. Um, we we've had an occasional incident. Those people are not invited back. We honor the city noise curfew of ten PM. We have that in all our documentation. Our renters get so much documentation. I'm amazed they still rent rent from us. But they do. And most of them say that we're the we're the best Airbnb in Boise.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I I assume from the way you testified that your Airbnb is on your uh property that you occupy otherwise, is that right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It didn't start out that way, but that was our goal. And we're here now and we're here to stay.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you so much for illustrating the broader effect of of you being a short term renter and how that affects our economy. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
The the twenty or so folks that you say you employ um or that you are able to share your wealth with as you do this work. Um, are they local here in Boise?
They're all local. Yep.
Do you happen to know if they're renters?
Um. Uh, yes, renters and owners, plus the people that make our our treats. In fact, my my person that makes our granola for our guests experiences that, oh, my gosh, you're, he's a small businessman. He makes a nature's granola is his product. He's like, oh, my gosh, if anything were to happen to you, you know, what would I do? Our pool cleaner is local. Um, yep, we do creekside marshmallows for our guests that check in. And uh, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And those those guys would all be here with me if I asked them to, honestly.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Okay, now we're going to go to some folks that are online. And clerk, I'll just have you call them off.
Madam Mayor, our first person is Colby Jderos.
Okay, welcome, Colby.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm speaking of short term rental ordinance. This ordinance is a prime example of government overreach and only the beginning of what I foresee as the same snowball effect that has taken hold in the state of Oregon. When the Oregon legislators begin restricting the rights of property owners to manage their rental properties, enforce the rules of their lease agreements and collect rental monies due, you saw countless mom and pop rental property owners go bankrupt, unable to pay their mortgages and keep up the exorbitant costs of homeownership. When the city of Bend, Oregon passed similar ordinance ordinances to the one proposed today, it didn't stop with that. They continued, as I'm sure you will, by restricting the total number of short term rental permits given, making it almost impossible for an individual to buy a home with twenty percent down and rent it without operating with negative cash flow each month. I made a goal for myself at the age of twenty five to become financially independent by the time I was forty. This wasn't going to happen by working my ninety five and saving cash, which is especially true today with the rapid rise in inflation and relatively stagnant wages. I knew I had to be smarter and invest my hard earned savings into real estate. I'm now twenty nine, made the decision to move to Boise eight months ago to invest my money in a state like Idaho where the government would not be putting me at risk of going bankrupt due to their overreach and where my rights as a private property owner to manage my property in the best and most profitable way that I saw fit would not be ta- taken away. I purchased a home on the bench that came with a rundown ADU. I remodeled the ADU myself and turned it into a short term rental. This allowed me to offset my mortgage and thus the savings into improving the property, which in turn improves the overall appearance of my neighborhood. And I've also started saving. And I've also started saving for the the down payment on my next property, upon which I plan to use a short term rental and repeat the cycle. Your ordinance is the first step to restricting these rights and essentially preventing any working class individual from owning rental properties without operating in the red even each month. Have you done the math on the cost of homeownership in Boise versus the potential income from long term rental lately? Let me tell you, with the median home price over half a million, that investment will not be profitable monthly unless you have the means to purchase it in cash or with a very high down payment. As a working class individual, I cannot afford to spend an additional thousand dollars per month on a second mortgage with this hope of in speculation that my home's value will appreciate. That cash flow just simply does not exist in my life. This is why allowing property owners to maximize their earning potential and utilize their space as short term rentals is so important. And why I strongly recommend this ordinance be shot down so that the snowball of regulation is not able to gain momentum. This ordinance specifically targets the extremely small percentage of rental property owners who choose to utilize their property as a short term rental instead of long term rental. Short term rentals bring revenue to the city, encourage tourism, and provide critical housing opportunities for traveling frontline frontline workers such as nurses and firefighters. Limiting the number
Our time.
Colby, thanks for your testimony. You've reached time. Have a good night. And I made a mistake. I I had gone through all this list and had Lori DeCare, I think, on the online list. And then it was pointed out that you're here. Come on up.
Are we not doing addresses tonight?
I'm sorry, what?
Are we doing addresses? Okay. Um, Boise's explosive growth and accompanying skyrocketing costs have created an acute crisis in the rental market.
Oh, yeah. Lori, I I know that I know your name, but I do need you to still state your name for the record.
Oh, sure.
I just give people now the the option to state address since it's streamlined online.
Oh, I gotcha. Okay, I didn't know that. Lori DeCare. Boise's explosive growth and accompanying skyrocketed costs have created an acute crisis in the rental market. The lack of available rentals for those in lower income brackets is exacerbated by the conversion of many long term rentals into the short term rental market. Short term rentals remove critical affordable housing stock from our already shrinking inventory. Most local government leaders around the country are grappling with the negative impacts that the rapid growth of the short term rental properties. Here in Idaho, many municipalities have already successfully put up guardrails on an industry well within the confines of state law. Boise is well behind the curve on addressing this emerging business technology. One of the most concerning results of the growth of short term rentals is the adverse effect on permanent local housing. The city of Boise is already experiencing historically low vacancy rates, skyrocketing, national newsmaking, double digit rent and housing increases, and a severe shortage of affordable rentals, which drives up rents and significantly limits choice, especially for low wage workers, seniors, and persons with disabilities, which results in people who are rent burdened, living in substandard situations like cars, tents, RVs, or are homeless. In a non resort city that doesn't have a traditional second or vacation or doesn't have traditional second or vacation homes, most every short term rental are existing housing that was converted to the tourist market. It is one thing for landlords to decide to convert, but we are starting to hear of aggressive sales techniques used by short term rental platforms, particularly Vacasa, to get long term landlords to convert, including hounding them with postcards, mailings, cold calling, and even financial enticement by making guarantees that if they don't make more in short term versus long term market, the platform will pay them five thousand dollars. Short term rentals are commodifying everyday life while consolidating wealth. Let's explore what happens when we take the commodification of our housing market to its logical conclusion. The old paradigm is that a house's price is the maximum amount that an area's average local buyer can afford to mortgage over twenty five to forty years. The new paradigm is a house's value is now the maximum amount of an annual rental income that can be extracted from it by an investor, multiplied by maximal institutional leverage. A privileged class of investors are allowed to utilize their assets, cash and leverage of the banking system and use that money to outbid first time home buyers who had to work for years to earn their money. This is where things get truly ugly. Let's say a condo is for sale right now or in twenty sixteen, based on the numbers I'm using. A first time buyer can afford maybe twelve hundred dollars a month, so they're able to pay two hundred and fifty thousand. A landlord can get twelve fifty a month in rent from a long term tenant. So they can do three hundred thousand. Can I just like this last sentence?
Finish the sentence and then you can send us the rest.
A non resident Airbnb host could fetch twenty five hundred dollars a month in nightly rent, double the long term landlord. So they're willing to bid it up to six hundred thousand dollars. I have a couple more sentences, but I guess my time.
And that would make a really long long run on sentence. So gotta stop it there. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else here planning on testifying? All right, we'll go back to the online folk.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Jack Cangus.
Jack, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Dave Cangus and I reside at seventeen fifteen Canal Street. And I am in support of this ordinance. Uh, basically to track the impact of short term rentals on Boise's housing market. Um, I've seen numbers that say that about four years ago, there was approximately a thousand short term rentals in Boise. And the numbers that I recently saw said about fifteen hundred. And that kind of growth says that in a few more years, there's going to be two thousand. That is a significant number of homes that are regulated to the short term housing market. As we push for density to increase housing, as we push to grow affordable housing, I believe the numbers the mayor is shooting for was fifteen hundred units over five years. And if you think about the numbers of the growth of short term rentals, that does have a significant impact on Boise's housing market. You can't tell me that fifteen hundred units does not fifteen hundred homes, it does not impact Boise's housing market. I'm not here to say that we need to eliminate or that that is the desired goal. But Boise needs to understand what that impact is. It might lead to something else down the road, but that is also regulated by state law. Um, as far as short term rentals go, I believe that they do an outstanding job of screening for their clients. And I think they provided a necessary service, especially in the summertime when we have numerous tournaments and stuff going on for families, softball, soccer, lacrosse, all of that stuff. I believe that in going through the ordinance that there are many onerous details that I think just go too far. Listing amenities, floor plans, parking, you know, ensuring that they have going inside of the home and saying they have smoke detector or carbon monoxide. I'm not sure where the tipping point is, but I do believe that as written, that it's probably it's going too far. That's about it. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Patricia Nelson.
Welcome, Patricia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Um, I'll be brief. I come, um, Patricia Nelson, three two two five Snowflake Way in Boise. Um, for reference, I've been a land use planner for thirty six years. I've explored this issue of my prior job before I retired last year. Um, it is an interesting conundrum. It's the hardest Sudoku you'd ever find in your career, I think. So um, kudos to everyone who's testified and the council and the and the city staff for for taking this first stab. I'll just go through the ordinance, the definitions, I think, to, uh, I would echo, uh, Councilmember Woodings regarding the definition. I think it needs to be added a portion thereof. Um, in zoning and building, you deal with units typically, but short terms you deal with parts of a structure. And I think that needs to be called out. So it's very clear on the applicability of the licensing. In section seven, I think that the um you should get information regarding the property I D. As was noted, these properties are difficult to find on those sites to find those addresses. And I I think to capture that at the time of the application would save the city staff a lot of time. I don't believe there's a need for a detailed plan of the house. I think if the structure is already conforming to building codes, that that would be superfluous. And I think there's a lot of testimony on the hardship that might um, cause some of the the owners. Um, I think in the application, you should also ask for the maximum number of occupants. I think there's an opportunity to kind of create a threshold by which this would apply. Um, I think with using the building code and the fire code thresholds should be looked at. And I would encourage you to have those conversations if they haven't already happened with fire and the building official. There are, um, that's where I see kind of the differentiation where you could probably find exempted out a lot of the properties that are have a homeowner's exemption or that the local contact lives on site. And then you, I think you'd have that security in the neighborhoods would know, um, things are things won't get out of control. Um, I think the compliance with the building code, the I R C and the I F C, those may filter out if there are other structures where there the um, operators are putting too many people than what the occupancy limits are for, that that may then be the best regulation that you already have uh to to filter those out. Um, I would also encourage that you, uh, if this is passed, that those licenses that are approved uh be also sent to the Ada County Assessor. I've looked in my neighborhood, most owners are compliant, but I have found a couple that still are claiming a homeowner's exemption where the whole house is being rented out. And so I think if it's a portion of a house versus the whole house, that that's kind of a a line that you might want to consider in the ordinance requirements. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Patricia. Questions? All right, next.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Eric Hagan.
Welcome, Eric.
Welcome. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. I am the North End Neighborhood Association Planning and Zoning Chair and Representative. Uh, the North End Neighborhood Association has conducted a kind of a casual poll online of neighbors within the North End as well as other people around the city. And we've gotten about four hundred and fifty to five hundred responses so far just in the past few days. And the the survey was about short term rentals in particular. And what we've gotten out of the survey is that about seventy percent of the of the respondents live near uh, short term rental. About fifty five percent of the respondents are for regulation and about thirty eight percent are against regulation. I believe it was about for about seven percent that were on the fence. What we've found from this data is that most people are for it. When we're looking at short term rentals, particularly in the North End, there's about five thousand homes. There's about a hundred, two hundred short term rentals. I'm using Mr. Badgen's math of one to forty. I don't think we have four thousand rental homes in the North End. But with every rental, be it long term or short term, comes about four or five neighbors. And while we've seen and heard from a plenty of excellent short term rental owners on Airbnb, there are a number of short term rentals that are owned by people that are not following the rules or have different rules that they live by. And as the North End Neighborhood Representative, I feel calls on a regular basis from neighbors in our neighborhood who are concerned about short term rentals. I've heard from one of them tonight. Uh, another one that I heard from had complained about a house that was a one bedroom house that they had converted the dining room and the living room into extra bedrooms and put two bunk beds in each room. So that's six people that were renting in that short term rental. Uh, at times leaving six cars on the street. Now, that's not always the case. So I I see, we see what the what is going on with the short term rental market. And so we've discussed it as the as the board, the NINA board, and we reviewed the ordinance and we took a vote of the board. And out of the seven board members that voted, six voted in favor of the ordinance and one voted against with four abstaining. So as as a neighborhood that reflects one of the larger issues with the short term rental market, uh, particularly in areas where there's six, five or six rentals within a block or two area, um, we are in support of the of this ordinance as a starting point. And we welcome uh, further development of it.
Thanks, Eric.
Just a quick comment to Mr. Hagan. Uh, I wanted to commend and thank you for disclosing and describing both the outreach you did in your neighborhood. And then for disclosing and telling us uh, the count of your board vote. I think that's that's exemplary thing to do. And I just really appreciate knowing that information.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Stephon Saint Marie.
Welcome.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Uh, my name is Stefan Saint Marie. I am a short term and long term rental owner. Um, and I am not in favor of this ordinance. Um, I'm also asking that you would not vote on this until you can show with um, real data, the negative impact cited and how an ordinance could address those issues. Um, I would argue that the short term rental marketplace is actually better regulated than the long term rental market. Uh, simply through reviews, background checks. Um, there's even holiday calendar blocks that websites will put on so you cannot have a one day booking over Halloween, for example. The only thing of value I see in this ordinance is a liability insurance requirement. But again, back to the data question. How many short term rentals do not have liability insurance? And have there been any examples of negative impact because homes do not have liability insurance? Uh, I haven't heard of any examples. Um, also Airbnb and VRBO include a one million dollar liability insurance. And I'd say if a home is not on one of those two platforms, that it won't be a short term rental for very long. Um, those are just the the two main players. Um, I see this in the neighborhood I live in, but parking is actually better, not worse for short term rentals than it is for long term rentals. Uh, you at least have a car per bedroom for a long term rental. Um, and then back to the comments about people taking Uber or the whole family renting a car when they're traveling. Um, I see house values improving, um, not worse when it's a short term rental and as opposed to a long term rental. Um, you know, the pictures have to be nice. You know, these are, these are marketed marketed uh rentals and and long term tenants just typically do not upkeep the property as well as an owner would that is managing a short term rental. And and yeah, to conclude, I would say I do not support this ordinance because of the fact that you would be taking eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars in license fees every year from us homeowners just to pay for an ordinance that, as I've said, without data, it does not show to make any measurable value. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Jeff Abrams.
Hey, everyone. Um, thanks for hosting this. Um, I'm Jeff Abrams. I now live in McCall. I moved here about five years ago after living in Boise for over twenty years and leaving my post at the community radio station. Um, I did keep my home, however, and have used it as an S T R since after spending a pretty big chunk of change to transform it from kind of a shag carpeted bachelor pad to a a really nice, clean, updated hideaway that visitors now really enjoy. Um, I guess I'm just uncertain now as to the real intent of the ordinance and and the proposal. Um, Valley County just enacted an S T R ordinance. It's reasonable. It's not onerous. It's not punitive. They 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 talk about many of the things that you have. Um, and so I think these things are really reasonable. I don't think any operator should have a fundamental philosophical issue with fulfilling these basic obligations. Uh, the real question I think folks are having an issue with is regulation to what end, right? I have concerns. I have concerns about taking this any, any further than what you're proposing. And I'm wondering if you've contemplated the revenue that STRs contribute to the state and to GBAD. I can personally testify that while getting a CUP up here for my yurt, during that process, I calculated I had paid over seven thousand dollars into state coffers over a five-year period. I can only imagine what that figure is for my Boise property and what it is multiplied by all the other operations down there. And I'm also kind of concerned for myself in regards to any proposed requirements about having a local operator. I don't see that it's reasonable to externalize the real causes of housing scarcity that have been endemic in Boise since I lived there, since I moved there onto operators of STRs. Do I have concerns about locals? Absolutely. Many of my friends, former associates, getting pushed out of rental markets for sure. They've been caught though in the livability crossfire that has put Boise on the national map. I classify seventy-five percent of my guests as wanting to either learn more about Boise or they've heard something or they have kids that live there. But this notion has been marketed by every chamber down there, every city and business in the Treasure Valley. So to blame those successes on STRs, I don't think is fair. I just encourage you guys to be reasonable. Don't overreach and don't look for a modest regulatory mechanism like this to solve intractable socioeconomic issues that require long-term dedication, diligence and meaningful reform. Thanks guys.
Madam Mayor.
Jeff, yeah, and before Jimmy Scott, I just have a question. And thanks for your comments. What I'm trying, and I agree with you that this won't, a license won't get at the other issues that are at play here. But are you saying that, um, you're, when you suggest that we stick with simple and that this is, now I'm, now I'm losing the words that you had. Is it that you're, you're concerned that there's a step after this that you think is the overreach? In terms of the, in terms of licensing versus other regulation? Because I hear what you're saying about Valley County, McCall City, it being relatively easy to follow as someone that has a property. But then you talked about the next steps, is that the concern or is it the license?
It is, thanks Lauren, yeah. It, it's, it's a feeling that I think, it's just a general feeling of unease in terms of, okay, it's one thing to ask for basic obligations to be met. Basic responsibilities that we can all say, yes, I will fulfill. But, but to then use it as a premise to try to reconcile what I call this livability crossfire is, is, is a step too far. And I think again, the word that I used was to externalize those real costs of grappling with that crossfire onto STR owners.
Great, thanks. Madam Mayor. House member, what, we've got Hallie Burton and then I think Clegg, did you move your hand? Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess it's kind of a similar question, but maybe I just need it to be a little more explicit from my own understanding. Jeff, good to hear from you. I heard you identify a few things that you didn't, you weren't a big fan of as far as the ordinance we're putting forward. You also said that the one in Valley County you thought was effective. I'm wondering if there's any specific things in the Valley County ordinance that you think is effective that we should be considering? Now that you've identified some of the things that you're worried about and the one that we're putting forward.
The, the biggest worry Jimmy is, is one, what I just articulated to Lauren. And, and two, this notion, and I don't know how set you are on it, of having a local operator. I mean, I live here two hours away. I have folks that clean my house and, and look after it, but that's a real concern of mine. But as far as positives up here, the county's been great to work with. I think a couple of things specifically Jimmy are private parking only. They do not allow visitors, guests to park in city or county, in this case, rights of way. I think that's totally legitimate myself. There's parking problems enough within the city to congest it further. So I, I think that it's reasonable to require operators to keep their automobiles from their guests on their private premises. They talk about things being residential in nature, there's safety monitoring, there's noise in quiet hours, there's insurance. And then there's a demonstration of tax compliance and, and garbage. There's also a basic requirement for a site plan, but it can be very cursory and, and crude. And that's really the extent of it.
Thanks Jeff.
Lucy next? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, thank you so much for calling in. I just was hoping you could expound a little bit on your term livability crossfire, just so that I could understand that a little bit better. And Madam Mayor is too polite to say it, but she's earned the right to be called Madam Mayor. So just wanted to reaffirm that with you. Go ahead Jeff.
I'm sorry that I, I, I aired, thank you for clarifying. The question was about what?
Livability crossfire, I think that was the term that you were using?
Yeah, I mean, I just sort of hatched it myself in drafting my notes, but I, I feel again like chambers of commerce, business, businesses, cities have done an amazing job at getting the word out about Boise and its livability. But just know that because you've done too good of a job, there is a crossfire that is occurring where there is collateral damage there. And folks that cannot keep up with the cost of living and the cost of housing are getting caught up in this crossfire. And those casualties, I believe, should not be pinned in any way on short-term rental operations.
Great, thank you so much for clarifying.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night Jeff, thanks for calling in.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Erin Cat. Hi Erin.
Hi there, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Yeah, I think what Jeff was trying to say was that Boise has become a victim of its own success. I just want to say thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I grew up here in Boise, I'm a local, I was on Ninth Street, went to Longfellow. I remember walking away from the school and buying Laffy Taffies and Jolly Ranchers from Margaret. And if you don't know who that is, then I've either outdated you or you haven't been paying attention, but I have a hunch you all know. And they were only five cents back then, but today it's a little different. I'm here to not talk about my childhood, but just kind of my thoughts on the frustration I have about the short-term rental issue. My wife and I have helped multiple owners, I guess you could call me a property manager. We've helped them with their rentals, their short-term rentals for over about six years now. We've had successfully over six thousand bookings. And I know I've only got three minutes and it's just, it just sounds like a, I don't even know where to begin. I've got notes, I've heard some wonderful testimonies, Christie Wolf, Dawn May, a number of other people that I, I just, their names I couldn't write down. But what I'm really concerned about here first and foremost before I run out of time is the ordinance itself that discusses, at least the provision under thirty-two, or sorry, three dash twenty-two dash seven D. The city determines at any time, excuse me, if the city determines at any time that license conditions have not or cannot be met, the applications for license may be renewed, may be denied or revoked. It's, it's just vague and you know, I, I write a lot of long-term leases, I wrote a lot of short-term leases and open-endedness is just not valuable for either party. Well, in this particular case, valuable for one party. And so I think that that needs to be clarified if, if we're going to have conditions, those need to be explained. With regards to the onerous implications upon the owners that I represent, I, I think that, you know, number one, additional steps in the process go well beyond what they're entrusting us to do. So that they're incurring not just additional fees from the city, but additional fees from, from us potentially, I mean, it's, it's a ton of work. So I, I think having, you know, clarification on, on what's really expected is probably reasonable. I was looking at RankBreeze, which happens to, to rank certain amenities. An outdoor shower was, was a frequently interested, you know, amenity. Do we need to report that? I, I think not. So revising some of those things would be, I think quite, quite reasonable. My last point, and I know I've gone over, is it's unfortunate that me and at least three or four other local management companies weren't approached with questions about, you know, what we do and who we see. And I think a lot of the misconceptions about who's coming and staying in these properties and who owns these properties could, could really be clarified in a, in a real meaningful way. So I appreciate the time, I appreciate testimony from both sides and I really hope to be a part of this conversation in a meaningful way. Thank you so much.
Thanks Erin.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Katie Feit.
No. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Katie.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some testimony, I'll be very brief. I think there, you know, that we do need to have regulations on short-term rentals. And I think this is a, you know, a reasonable action, except I'm not sure about the need for a detailed floor plan. Some, that seems to me kind of something that is not really needed. I also think that Amy Goodrich articulated concerns about absentee owners far better than I can at this time of night. And so I would just like to say I, I support her testimony about that. And I really do think there is a difference between when someone rents out on a short-term basis, a portion of their home versus when someone has a property management company take care of ten units or whatever and live perhaps on the other side of the world. So I think that's a real concern, especially given our affordable housing crisis here in Boise. And then I'm also interested really in seeing what kind of information comes from potentially like how many ADUs are in reality, short-term rentals? Because as we build a second building on our, our lots here in Boise, we're losing a whole lot of green space. And I believe the city's desire in passing the ADU, I mean, allowing ADUs to be built, passing an ordinance, whatever happened, was that it be providing living space for, you know, a rental-type property? So I'm very interested in seeing how many of the ADUs are actually being used as Airbnbs? And I'll end it there.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Cameron Kinzer.
Mayor McLean and members of the City Council, my name is Cameron Kinzer. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Boise Regional Realtors. And on behalf of our members, I want to start by saying we don't want short-term rentals to be causing issues in neighborhoods and fully support the city's code enforcement rules to handle any issues that might come up at an STR, just like you would with an owner occupied or long-term rental property. And yet we have concerns about provisions in this proposed licensing ordinance that are not related to health and safety issues and therefore could be beyond the scope of the state statute related to regulating STRs. I'll discuss five of our concerns here, starting with three dash twenty-two dash seven, Section A. Number one, why would it be necessary to provide the names of every owner for an STR? Shouldn't one contact suffice based on the stated purpose of reaching out to someone if an issue rises? Next, under three dash twenty-two dash seven, Section A, number three, ask for detailed diagram of the property. This has already been discussed, but this information should already be available through county records. Continuing on to number five in that same section, which states information about STR amenities may be required by the city clerk's office. While city staff has stated it's not the intention to require certain amenities, the way it's worded can be misinterpreted and again, is beyond the scope of the city's stated purpose for this ordinance. Next, in three dash twenty-two dash seven, Section A, number four, the term local agent should be amended to say local contact. Local agent could imply some type of agency relationship with fiduciary responsibilities. Finally, in Part D of three dash twenty-two dash seven, the ordinance sets unknown licensing conditions. This provision is far too broad and allows the city or clerk to attach conditions not explicitly stated in the draft ordinance, which could invalidate STR licenses. We believe this section should be removed. Our overarching concern, which has been referenced by city leadership on a variety of occasions, is to create the foundation for future policy decisions that could potentially seek to limit a homeowner's right to use their property as they see fit. As an example, Councilman Hallie Burton during the October 12th meeting stated that, quote, if someone owns ten of these that could potentially be used for long-term rentals, that's a problem. From our perspective, comments like that create concern and uncertainty for our members, their clients and anyone who might want to use their property as an STR. While we all know that there's a shortage of units compared to demand in our market, targeting STRs, which make up less than one percent of the total housing stock in Boise, based on our research, with additional fees, licensing rules and potential future regulations is not the solution to this very complex situation. We know that state law largely prohibits cities from restricting STRs outright, but that hasn't stopped other communities in Idaho from trying under the guise of health and safety. We sincerely hope that this licensing ordinance is not a first step in attempting to do that in the city of Boise, but if so, VRR will vigorously oppose any such restrictions on property owners that may be proposed. Thank you so much for your time and consideration of our members.
Madam Mayor.
Thanks Cameron for your line-by-line suggestions, appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Kinzer, one, I guess one question for you, I asked somebody else earlier. What would your organization's position be on an ordinance that simply said short-term rental or all rental properties shall carry a million dollars in liability insurance? They shall adhere to all building codes for things like smoke detectors, et cetera. They shall adhere to all parking rules backed by a fine.
I, I guess it would depend on the wording of the ordinance, but it's something we'd be open to at least working on with the city.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there is no one else with their hand raised.
All right. So that's it for testimony this evening. Follow-up questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, I just had someone that raised their hand.
All right, we'll take one more.
That is Richard Llewellyn.
Welcome Richard.
Richard Llewellyn, ninety-one seventy Hill Road. Madam Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I apparently didn't have that, my hand fell down. I just like a couple of
I heard, it's really late.
Yes. So first of all, I, I first became aware of this idea of short-term rentals. Back in the nineties, traveling, especially in Latin America, I thought it was a really great concept. You could live with local people, families that had added on to their house or whatever and avoid the resort scene and in a lot of ways empowered local people. So I, I've started out with a kind of positive thought about it. But I do think that as many disruptive technologies will do, they take a qualitative, well, they facilitate kind of a qualitative, it's a quantitative. Sorry, it's too late, those are too big of words. Anyhow, I think it is different now. And so I look at this regulation and in my mind, there's kind of three things that can be problematic with regulation. And one is this can be blind to the actual problem. Two, its actual intent can be to ban the use. And three, it can be written by essentially the more powerful sectors of the industry and thus limit competition, especially that tends to impact the small, the small owners and small users. And I am sympathetic to the idea that small users, like I kind of initially experienced it. I think it can be beneficial. I have a neighbor who Um, I think it can be beneficial. I have a neighbor who, who does STRs and he's a good neighbor and it's not a problem. But as I go through this list of, of regulation, um, the first thing is, the, the number one thing is to get good data. And I think licensing is the most important thing here. So we can get good data. Um, two, the, the second problem, clearly the intent is not to ban, um, state preempts that. However, it does give, um, wide, broad powers in protecting integrity of neighborhoods. I think that's very important. And then, um, three, by you taking action as civic leaders, I think that is very important to prevent onerous, competition-stifling, um, regulation that likely might come down, um, the line in the future if cities don't step up themselves. So I'm in support of the ordinance, especially the part that helps, helps the city collect information. I think that can make policing more efficient in neighborhoods like mine. But we're getting a lot more nuisance calls than we used to. Um, having this information available at dispatcher to resolve afterwards in community policing, I think will make us more efficient. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Madam Mayor, there is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay, all right. Now we'll go to further questions, follow-up for staff?
Madam Mayor, I can start out with two questions and then I'll let everybody else jump into them. My first one really has to do with something that's been brought up a couple of times that I guess I just need clarity on, and that is the misdemeanor, the penalty aspect of this. And so I guess my question for staff is, is that truly our only option if somebody was non-compliant in this issue? Or do we have other mechanisms, fines, um, that we could implement instead?
Why don't you jump up to the microphones? We can hear.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, um, our goal always with our compliance team is to seek compliance and to educate, and, and that is across the board with any license that we have. Um, however, having a misdemeanor as a tool is and provides them the ability to seek some of the change that they may need in cases where they need to do that. Whereas an infraction is more of a fine and not as punitive. So a misdemeanor does tend to get more of compliance when needed, but is very rarely, you could look at the stats from our office, very rarely used as a tool because our goal is to get that compliance by other means.
Madam Mayor, I guess the follow-up to that question, so because I trust our staff, um, and the great intentions that I believe our staff in our city has, like, sounds really, really good, right? Um, but if I'm someone in the community and this has come up a couple more times, they want specific things of if this is going to happen, then that's going to happen. And the vagueness of a may or a might or we could, you know, I think is potentially sort of troubling for some. And so I guess what I'm hearing you say is that yes, we could do a fine, but in our experience, we don't find that that has been as effective as having a misdemeanor be the largest penalty, but we do everything that we can to keep them from getting there. Is that what I'm hearing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that is correct. And certainly we can look to legal to see what other options are afforded to us by the state. Um, that's not necessarily my bailiwick from the licensing perspective. So happy to follow up on that if you would like us to look at other options.
Great. And then Madam Mayor, my second question, um, this has come up a couple of times as well, and it really has to do with the amenities that are there and that are being offered. And I'm trying to understand the, the purpose of what is collecting that is. So let's say that they have a million-dollar policy. And so if somebody slips and falls in the pool, that would be covered by that policy. But I don't understand what us knowing that there is a pool at that spot in a way that we wouldn't already know, um, from all the different systems that we have, would provide us with any extra data?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I mean, I think that's certainly a policy decision to be considered tonight uh, by each of you. Uh, it gives us more information about what is out there, but maybe that is not necessary based on the considerations that we've heard this evening.
And, and Madam Mayor, just to follow up there, I'm not questioning whether or not we should. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, like, could you just refresh me on what were the reasons that we thought we needed to have those in place? The list of amenities?
Absolutely. Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, just looking to see, you know, what amenities are in place, what risks might be in place. So if we were running into challenges, we would know how to reach out and contact those that had consistent amenities. So we could follow up, uh, with them. So for instance, and again, I've given several examples tonight and they're just anecdotal examples. I know we've referred to parking a lot because that seems like an easy example uh, for me, but we're not certainly targeting parking. But again, another example might be a swimming pool. And if for some reason, um, again, we were seeing lots of drownings and there were lots of problems, we might, you know, put a recommendation in place, reach out to people that had that amenity and require alarms on pools or fencing on pools, very consistent with what we do with childcare, for instance. Not saying that that's what we would do, that's just an example of something that we might do outreach on if we saw those kinds of trends and we would know which households had those amenities. So we could do that outreach.
Great. That's actually more clear to me. So that's helpful. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Hallie Burton's first question, which, um, had to do with the infraction versus misdemeanor. By memory that we have other ordinances where we have a step process where, um, if you have a, an offense, it's an infraction. If you continually have offenses, two or three or four, it can become a misdemeanor. Seems to me that's a, um, a better way for the public to feel confidence that we're not just out to get them, that we're out to actually fix the problem. Um, so I guess as this goes forward, if we're going to, uh, consider some rewrites, I would want to consider something like that.
Madam Mayor, um, I had very much the same notes as the council president on that. And I think that that would be a really great way, um, if this goes forward to deal with the penalty section.
And then Madam Mayor, um, I think to the question that, that has come up a lot and, um, maybe other council members also have this issue, as I've been looking, for instance, on, uh, the form that the city of McCall requires. Um, the bit I can find about Valley County, um, some of the others. It's a very simple form in terms of how many bedrooms do you rent? Um, do you have off-street parking? If we feel like we need to know amenities, do you have any amenities? Please list them. Boom, boom, boom. And then a checklist of, do you have smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors? Do you have, do you have, do you have? Sign it, you're done. And it seems to me like something like that would be a much simpler way for especially small, um, local operators to be able to comply with this in a very easy way. So again, if we're going to rewrite it and we're willing to move forward, I'd like to see something like that. And then finally, um, Madam Mayor, sorry. Another thing that's come up quite a bit is the difference between a property where there's an owner occupant and it's either an ADU or it's rooms within the existing building. And I don't know if we exempt those completely or if we just create a different category, but I'd also be interested, I think, in something like that because it's, um, as I've experienced these myself in other places, and as I've heard tonight, uh, those ones where there's a existing owner right there, um, are managed much differently than one that has a absent owner.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor, um, I guess I'll pipe in here. Um, I had actually very much the same notes as the council president around ownership of, or I should say owner-occupied, um, ADU properties. So those that have, you know, renting a room within a home or renting an ADU on property, um, that the owner resides on. I think that that's much different. And so I don't know how we want to deal with that. Um, whether we want this to only apply to those that are owned by people who live off-site or um, or something. But I think that there needs to be some consideration there because I think that those owner-occupied properties aren't the ones that, um, we're looking to get data on.
Madam Mayor.
The, um, the one thing I'd say on that though, is that if we want a complete picture of data, it's the operating of a business and a license that gets that. And the insurance is a key piece of that is still necessary, whether or not I live in my house and I rent the unit behind me or I live next door and I run a unit, three units down.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, you know, we heard about folks, um, having these ADUs. And I know that when, when we talked about encouraging folks to have ADUs, we were talking about it in terms of folks creating affordable, uh, housing for us. We didn't really talk about it, I don't recall, in terms of it providing an income stream for the owners. It was more about affordable housing. So I'm curious how short-term rentals fit in with the work we did about encouraging more construction of ADUs. Cause we have heard tonight that folks are using their ADUs for short-term rentals. And I'm, I do recall another time where we okayed a development, um, uh, and, and had an affordable unit component only to discover that that development was using, uh, those units as, as Airbnb's, if I recall correctly. So, uh, I would like some research about that.
Madam Mayor, if I might, um, I think that is part of the challenge that we're facing, that we're trying to address with the ordinance. Because where I don't know where short-term rentals are, um, I don't know how to identify which ADUs are connected and being used as a short-term rental. So I think again, that, that's kind of the gap that we're seeing. And so I don't know that I can make that connection even with additional research, but I'm happy to certainly seek that out and, and work with our building department.
Thank you, Jamie. And just to clarify, um, I say that nothing against anybody trying to make it in these difficult times. It's just that my recollection of, as we discussed, encouraging more ADUs in our community, it was for the purpose of providing density and more affordable housing units.
I think, um, staff's gotten direction. So I think a motion is appropriate, um, to determine then the direction that we're headed in the next couple of weeks.
Madam Mayor, um, I, although we quit taking testimony, I don't know if you officially closed the public hearing. So if we're going to do a test of motion, we probably ought to do that.
We'll do that closed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. I was going to make a motion to postpone. I think that there's too many changes to postpone and to try to figure out exactly what all of those changes are. So I'm going to move to deny, um, the ordinance and direct staff to come back at a later date with some specific changes, um, in some specific areas. And I can outline those now or I can outline those if I have a second.
Second.
So, Madam Mayor, again, I think that this is a very well-intentioned ordinance that takes steps in the right direction and things that we need to pursue. My issue is that there, I think that there is potentially an issue with just some basic language, like the difference between a local contact and a local agent. Um, there's been conversations about a floor plan that I would love for staff to be able to come back and say, is there enough information at Ada County Assessor's Office for that to be even included? And so I don't know the answer to that. So I don't know how to amend that in an ordinance tonight. Um, I don't know if there truly is a need for a listing of amenities. Um, and I feel like there needs to be some work done in figuring out how we can maybe move to a multi-step um, program to address fines, then potentially a misdemeanor in the future or whatever those punitive things are. But again, I think that those discussions need to be defined a little bit more before I could postpone a, um, make a motion to postpone or make a motion to approve with a certain amount of changes. The final thing is, is with the amenities, if the parking is the main issue, I'm not sure what we have the capability to regulate that with there. But if McCall has had some opportunities to do that and parking is one of the key amenities, then I would love to see what we could actually do to address that specific issue because that specific issue was brought up a multiple times tonight. And again, I don't know what the answers to those questions are at this point.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
If I could just talk process, um, we don't have anything before us to deny. We have an ordinance that was proposed with a resolution to move it to first reading. So the appropriate action, whoever makes the motion, would be to choose not to move it to first reading and direct staff to bring it back either with changes that we've talked about tonight or bring it back to a work session to identify further changes beyond what we've talked about tonight. I believe, is that, would that be the correct process?
Sure, Madam Mayor, I, I withdraw my motion to deny.
That's fine.
Um, and I would move that we, uh, direct staff to bring it back with a list of changes that I've already addressed, as well as any other things that council would like to. And my recommendation would be that that would be done in a work session.
Second.
All right. And so now what I think is most prudent is for, we've gotten the council president's list. We've gotten your list. If there are other things that ought to be addressed, typically we'll do this as we move through it. We could do it at a work session. Um, but anything else to bring back for the work session?
Madam Mayor. My, um, overarching concern, I, I have several, but the overarching concern that hopefully can be addressed is that the proposed ordinance that we saw is fairly onerous. And that benefits sophisticated operators, particularly out-of-state investors or people who own many or people who hire property managers at the expense of your mom and pop, who already have a difficult time complying with the various rules that we have. Um, I don't know it, but I suspect that the data from the clerk's office would, would reflect that your average homeowner attempting to engage in a city permit process has a much more difficult time than a sophisticated developer or a sophisticated operator. So my first concern and something that I hope would be reflected in what comes back is that although very well-intentioned and I really believe brought in good faith, the structure and the shape of this ordinance exacerbates the problems that many people in the community.
So council member, I'm going to ask you for specific things that you're looking for staff versus the philosophical arguments at this point, if we're going to bring it back um, for review and then the philosophical arguments.
Well, Madam Mayor, it's not a philosophical argument, it's a practical one. If this is complicated and the direction is make it simple. If this is complicated, it's very difficult for people in our community. And the people in our community who want this, want it because they're worried about people else.
What would you propose be brought back to make it simpler?
It's, it's like a one-page checklist would be great. I'm concerned that, I, I, I'm not sure that licensure really even needs to be a component of it. And I direct staff to explore just the requirements, bam, 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 uh, potentially backed by a fine. And if we go with licensure, explain why it's, why it's better and more useful. And then the second thing.
That is, so the, the list is something they can bring back. Staff has explained the licensing piece in this ordinance before us as a licensing ordinance. So there's a vote against a license, I get it, totally appropriate. But in the context of this ordinance, I understand that you would like staff to bring back a list, perhaps like the council president suggested, like McCall does, of things. Beyond the list, what else would you like to see?
I'd like to see in the work session, an articulation of why licensure, rather than simple rules, are better. Um, and then I have some. I have a separate set of concerns that, um, that I think I'll talk about with council leadership, uh, internally before that work session.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, um, I'm going to support the mo, I guess there is no motion.
But to go back to the Rine Board, I would like to echo the concerns about well, how this affects small business and what is the end result? What is our, what is our end goal? I think we've heard from a variety of folks here that there's a different perspective on what that end goal is. And I would like clarity from the city's perspective on what we're really trying to get at. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There were actually two other things that I, well, three, that I didn't talk about, um, that I would like to see addressed somehow in this. Um, the state law allows us to, uh, regulate for public safety and health. It also allows us to, um, consider neighborhood integrity. And really none of the clauses we have in this today do that, other than beginning to gather information about how it might impact neighborhood integrity. beginning to gather information about how it might impact neighborhood integrity. One of the things we might consider that other places have done is just prohibit noise between certain hours if you're going to have a short-term rental. It's just one of the things you agreed to, to have a short-term rental in the city of Boise. Another is to prohibit events that include people who are not part of the rental party.
Can you, can you say that again? Sorry, to prevent?
Prohibit events.
Oh, prohibit events, sorry.
That include people who are not part of the rental party. In other words, you can rent and have a big party among yourselves, but you can't invite 20 other people, right? Without a different permit. So those are two of the things I've seen. And then a posting of all of those rules visible to the renters is a way to ensure that you've communicated with the renters what those rules are. I'd like to see those three things considered.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor.
Where was that?
Lucy.
Oh, sorry. Obviously, we're going to talk about the philosophical views on this, but I do think we owe it to the public to talk a little bit more about the enforcement of this. It seems to be pretty loose and I think that makes people really nervous, especially when you talk about what that could mean for them and their business and their guests. So I would like to have that much more spelled out, anything that comes through for the council. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, I'm going to tag on to a line of questioning that we had a little back and forth on earlier around the owner occupancy piece. And I think that gathering data on the ADUs makes a lot of sense. I'd like to explore whether we need additional insurance requirements when folks are renting a single room inside the home where they reside. And if it makes sense to treat those as a license, the same as we're treating standalone, standalone homes.
And just for staff clarity, and because I might have dismissed it, they didn't, I don't know. The, I rent a room in my house scenario for insurance versus I rent an ADU behind my house scenario?
Okay, right, all right, yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Also would like to see, I mean, we've done this with some of our other ordinances where they've been where we haven't been 100% all excited about them. And that is that we, we decided to, to take a look at them six months a year and perhaps explore that and see if we can put a sunset, maybe after a year, since what I've heard is that this is about collecting information. And we should, I think in a year, be able to figure out whether this is something we need. Hopefully, we won't be in a housing crisis in a year, but, but perhaps we can take a look at that as well.
Okay. You guys got it all? We have a motion on the table? Clerk, we call the roll.
Clay.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts. Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I make just one comment real quick? Yeah. Um, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and being online too. We heard from a lot of ADU owners. We heard from several people who live adjacent to, or sorry, STRs, it's getting really late. People who live adjacent to STRs. We didn't hear anyone who lives adjacent to an STR who came and was like, this is the best thing ever. We only heard from folks who live by STRs who have had their lives negatively impacted. And I really think that that says something. I mean, I live adjacent to a couple of them. They don't enhance our neighborhood. I mean, they haven't really done anything but cause general strife in our neighborhood. So I think that that's an important thing to remember as we're going about figuring out how we're going to ensure that we are protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods. Because it's a thing, I own a long-term rental, I've chosen not to have it as a short-term rental for that reason. And, and I think that as a member of our community, it's incumbent to all of us to understand what our responsibility is. So there's the end of my soapbox. Thank you for letting me have it.
Nothing else to come for the council?
I move we adjourn.
Second, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.